I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Mr. Klepper, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Of course. Please, everybody rise. Place your hand over your heart and repeat after me.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Councilmember Ayala?
Here.
Councilmember Littler?
Here.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Here.
Mayor Protem Judge?
Here.
And Mayor Kavanaugh?
Here.
Are there any items for gender review?
There are none this evening.
Thank you.
I move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read in title only and all further reading be waived.
Second.
Call for the vote. The motion passes unanimously? Thank you. If any member of the City Council may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should so declare it this time. Seeing none, we can move on. Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, the first item on the agenda is Item 1D1, Presentation of an Honorary Resolution to the 2025 Community Volunteer of the Year, and Office Specialist Candace Gray is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and the members of the City Council. Each year, the public is invited to nominate a dedicated volunteer for recognition as the Community Volunteer of the Year. This year, several nominations were received, each highlighting the commitment, time, and talents of our community volunteers. Tonight, the City Council is proud to recognize an exceptional individual who embodies the spirit of volunteerism and whose dedication to our community has made a profound impact. And at this time, I'd like to ask Peter Carubi to come forward to accept the 2025 Community Volunteer of the Year Award. Peter has contributed an impressive 800 volunteer hours throughout 2024 to various causes, adding to his remarkable 20-year legacy of giving back. He serves on the Executive Boards of the Simi Valley Police Foundation, Neighborhood Council Number Three, and Simi Sunrise Rotary. Additionally, Peter plays an active role on the Simi Valley Chamber Leadership Steering Committee and contributes vital security services at community events, ensuring the safety and well-being of our residents. Peter's unwavering commitment to service is also evident in his involvement in numerous community projects, including maintaining Happy Face Hill, building bikes with Rotary, and assisting the Samaritan Center and the public action to deliver shelter, the PADS program, to feed and shelter the homeless. The City Council is privileged to recognize Peter Carubi as the 2025 Community Volunteer of the Year for his outstanding contributions and unwavering dedication to making our community a better place.
Now, I told him I wouldn't read the resolution, but it is very nice and it's very well deserved. You and I have known each other now for years. In every event, you're there volunteering, doing something. So, but it's nice to be able to finally recognize you with this wonderful resolution. The community of Simi Valley thanks you for all you do. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, I'll say a couple. How you doing? Well, first and foremost, I want to thank the City of Simi Valley for having so many volunteer opportunities, and they have a lot. I also want to thank my lovely wife, Sandra. She is the one who nominated me, actually, I found out. And I just want to say why this award is so special to me, real quick. Why it's so special to me, because I look out at this audience, even on the dais, and all these people I've met while volunteering right next to you. I mean, that's how I met most of you guys, is volunteering while you volunteered. So, I strongly believe that each and every one of you also deserve to be where I'm standing here today, and that's what makes this so special, because it's got my name on it. But you all deserve to be right where I'm at, so thank you very much. And join a service club, it'll change your life, guarantee it.
And Mayor Kavanaugh, Peter, before you go down, Mayor Kavanaugh, if I could say something, I want you to know that Mr. Peter Carubi, where was he Saturday? All day, he was at the Roundup Festival, making security happen, all day, hours and hours. If he looks a little red, he was out in the sun. But I, we take pictures. Could we especially invite everyone who has a Peter Carubi picture to come down and take a picture with him? I just think this is an opportunity. So, if you have a Peter Carubi, by the way, he, come on down and take a picture. All right. Circle, circle around. Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 1D2, Presentation of an Honorary Resolution to the 2025 City Volunteer of the Year, and Office Specialist Candace Gray is presenting this item as well.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and members of the City Council. Each year, staff from the city nominate dedicated volunteers for the City Volunteer of the Year. And tonight, the City Council recognizes an individual who has made a significant impact over the past year. At this time, I would like to ask Al Brown to come forward to accept the 2025 Volunteer, City Volunteer of the Year Award. Al Brown has dedicated nearly 1,000 hours to various city boards and committees. And since 2022, he has served on the Council on Aging Executive Board, playing a pivotal role in events such as the Wellness Expo, Street Fair, and Bingo Bonanza. He also represents the Council on Aging on the Ventura County Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council, advocating for the needs of our adult population. Al is an active member of Neighborhood Council Number Two and also serves on the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee, providing invaluable input on projects that benefit our community's most vulnerable residents. Additionally, Al is a highly engaged member of the Youth Employment Services Advisory Board, where he actively participates in every event and consistently offers innovative ideas for youth programs. Known for his remarkable ability to connect with young people through storytelling and humor, Al has made a lasting impact on our local youth. And you may not know this, but Al has a hidden talent. Some of you may have caught his captivating magic act, which he showcased at the Council on Aging's 50th Anniversary Celebration last year. The City Council is proud to honor Al Brown as the 2025 City Volunteer of the Year for his unwavering spirit of volunteerism and for inspiring us all to give back to our community. His dedication and selfless contributions have truly made a positive impact on our community. Thank you, Al.
We have this beautiful resolution for you. And if she did not mention a committee that he was currently serving on, I'm sure he volunteered for it and interviewed for it, because I've seen you at everyone. Well, and you do a great job on everything we assign you to, and even the ones you just choose on your own. So, you're a gem for us. We love having you here, and congratulations on this very well-deserved recognition. I think, want to take, you want to take the picture? Because he needs to, he needs to say a few words, and then I would love a picture with the whole council if that were possible.
Most important part, the microphone.
Not a resolution, right? There you go. It's fine.
Comes with old age.
It doesn't have glass, we're good.
I know you're busy, I won't take too long tonight, just about two and a half or three hours. I accept this award, not just for myself, but for literally hundreds of volunteers throughout the city that are absolutely fantastic, many of them, I think, far more deserving than I am, what they do and what they contribute. I especially want to just really let everybody know the people that I thank the most, and they are the workers, the hard workers. At the Senior Center, as you know, which is also the Council on Aging Home, and the Council on Aging Board, which I'm the Vice Chairman, are the greatest people. They're magnificent people. We're all old and we get things done, it's amazing. And at the Senior Center itself, our director, it was him here, Kim Post, is spectacular. She took over from someone who got promoted to the city, sitting at the back. Angel, wave, that's Angel Sierra. He was also like a mentor to me. But my biggest mentor at the city has been Robert Martin, who's watching tonight, where's the camera? He had a tremendous thing happen in his life, his mother passed away recently, but he's been wonderful. As has Raquel Welch, who's not here, give her a good wave. Anytime I need anything, she gets it. And the lady who read this is also from the Senior Center, Candace Gray, who is probably the best actress you'll ever see, and I think when she read that, you all recognized her tremendous talents. In addition to that, I want to thank, sitting back here, a lady who stood with me for two years, Council, the Neighborhood Council. How many of you are on the Neighborhood Council? I know you are. Every person in this room is not on the Neighborhood Council, that's you. You're a council member, you should be there and part of the board. Very, very important. And I don't know how else to thank you for standing with me for two years, it was unbelievable, it's just great. Lastly, amongst the people that I work with regularly, it was mentioned I work with the kids. They are our future, I don't know how else to put it. And the man who holds them all together, we had last Friday and Saturday, an event at the Cultural Arts Center. Did I say it right? Good, okay. So many places, I can't keep track of them all. He put together an amazing show. One of our new council members happens to have been there and told me about it, and I thank all of you, and I thank him in particular, Mr. Ryan. And I don't know how you hold your own with those kids, I can't handle it myself. That's the working level people. Oh, by the way, did I mention Kelly's name? I don't know if I mentioned. There's a group of people right here. Rocky, I'll see you in a few weeks at the fair. Mike, see you tomorrow at the Council on Aging. No, at the Neighborhood Council. I can't keep track. Elaine, the best magician's assistant in the world, I'll see you at the Neighborhood Council, at the Council on Aging, next week, Monday, along with Mike. I see you all over, you're amazing, I don't know how you get to all the places you get to. And a couple of people who aren't as obvious. Sam, you walked into something when you came here, but we are sure happy you're here. And one of your assistants, Anna, I didn't see her here today, she's been spectacular as all. But lastly, the most important person in my life. I don't know how to put it to you, she can't be here, she has dementia, I'm her caregiver. 59 years we've been together, the last few have been pretty tough. And you heard the song "Love Will Keep Us Together"? It's true. She's the lady behind the man. Thank you all.
Congratulations, Al.
She's going to take it, Al, she's going to take a picture of you with the City Council. The Council would like to take a picture with you. You don't have to step down here, please. And what's your beautiful wife's name?
My wife is Linda Kay.
Well, wonderful, thank you, Linda, for sharing Al with Simi Valley.
I don't know how to put it, I've lived all over, Simi Valley is without a doubt number one in the entire country. And I've been to New York, Chicago, Landville, Dallas. I can keep going, but we'll be here all night.
He doesn't even need the microphone. We're good. We're good, Al.
There we go. Switch out.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, everybody. Congratulations. Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 1D3, Presentation of a Proclamation Recognizing the Observance of Arbor Day and Declaring the Week of April 7 through April 13 as Simi Valley Arbor Week. And Associate Planner Ruiz Sharparian is here to present this item. And accepting the proclamation is Derek Carlson, Regional Forester, Cal Fire.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and Honorable City Council Members. Tonight, we are delighted to announce that the Arbor Day Foundation has once again recognized the City of Simi Valley as a Tree City USA. We are privileged to have a representative from the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection here tonight in recognition of our city achieving the Tree City USA certification for the 25th consecutive year. The first Arbor Day was observed in 1872 with the planting of over a million trees. In that tradition, the City of Simi Valley is dedicated to enhancing and preserving the urban environment with the planting of trees. Simi Valley has been named for the 25th year as a Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation. The Simi Valley City Council proclaims the Week of April 7, 2025 Arbor Day Week, Arbor Week in the city, and encourages all residents and businesses to plant trees to enhance the beauty of Simi Valley and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Please welcome Cal Fire Representative Derek Carlson.
Good evening, thank you for inviting me to be a part of your city's Arbor Day observance. My name is Derek Carlson, I'm the Los Angeles and Ventura Counties Regional Urban Forester for the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection. Arbor Day Foundation recognizes cities for their commitment to trees through the Tree City USA Program. For a community to receive Tree City USA designation, they must meet four fundamental components: a tree board or department, a tree care ordinance, a community forestry program with an annual budget of at least $2 per capita, and an Arbor Day proclamation and observance. Since 2000, the City of Simi Valley has shown its dedication to restoring, enhancing, and maintaining your community's urban forest by meeting or exceeding Arbor Day's, Arbor Day Foundation's Tree City USA standards. Cal Fire supports and delivers the Tree City USA Program on behalf of the Arbor Day Foundation. As a Cal Fire Urban Forestry Representative, it's a great pleasure to recognize Simi Valley's city officials, staff, and partners for the hard work they do to improve the quality of life for their citizens. I'm honored to be here with you today to celebrate Simi Valley's Tree City USA designation for the 25th year. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, we present this resolution. Arbor Day is one of my favorite things, it's one of the first things I got started involved with at the city, was we used to actually do a full Arbor Day on a Saturday at the park, and we'd have presentations, and all the different departments and schools got involved, and it was really something special. And one of the best things I enjoy about Simi is you come over the hill, you look down, you get down to the bottom of the hill, and all you see is trees, and that's our lovely city. So, thank you for all you do, and we'd like to recognize this resolution.
Thank you.
She's moving us. Thank you again. Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 1D4, Presentation of a Proclamation Declaring the Month of April 2025 as Fair Housing Month, and Community Services Coordinator Kelly Duffy is here to present this item. And accepting the proclamation is Senior Management Analyst Cynthia McCullough.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and Honorable City Council Members. Tonight, we're pleased to recognize the City of Simi Valley's ongoing commitment to ensure equal housing opportunities for all residents, and accepting the proclamation on behalf of the Housing Rights Center is Cynthia McCullough, Representative of the City's Housing Division. This April marks the 57th anniversary of the signing of Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, more commonly known as the Fair Housing Act, which established a national policy of non-discrimination in the sale, rental, and financing of housing based on race, color, national origin, religion, sex, familial status, or disability. The State of California's Fair Employment in Housing Act and the UNRO Civil Rights Act offers additional protections against housing discrimination, including age, ancestry, gender identity, sexual orientation, source of income, veteran status, marital status, primary language, and more. The city partners with the Housing Rights Center to investigate and remedy illegal housing discrimination, offers counseling, and provides education to both housing consumers and providers. Despite existing legislation and local efforts, housing discrimination remains a challenge, making ongoing education and enforcement more important than ever. This proclamation reaffirms the city's support for fair housing and encourages all residents to uphold these principles. In recognition of these efforts and the ongoing work to promote equal housing access, the City Council proclaims April 2025 as Fair Housing Month.
There you go, Cynthia, Cynthia, thank you very much. You and your department and Environmental Services do a great job and really help us with our housing elements and all the things that we need to get done in town, so we appreciate everything that you guys do. Picture. Thank you, Cynthia. Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 2, Public Statements on Appointments, Special Presentations, and Information Reports. We have one speaker for this item this evening, Gary Molly?
Say my name, right? Or address, everything? Oh, okay. I'm here to address fire prevention. I'm here tonight to discuss whether the city regards to underground utilities to help prevent fires, period. And this under, is this under review for the areas that are currently due not to have their utilities underground? Like all your new structures or your new homes have utilities underground? And we know we're tied into some kind of transformer somewhere, so the more of the story is to get...
Sir, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
This item should be under our next public speaking? This item should be under our next public speaking? Right now, we're just discussing things that we just did, our appointments and our proclamations. That's okay. It happens.
Oh, okay.
But I think you'll be interested if you look at the agenda. We do have a fire presentation tonight.
Oh. So, do I step down?
Yeah, go ahead and sit back down, and we'll call you back up again.
All right.
Thank you so much. Sorry about that.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 3A1, Appointments to the Community Projects Grant Review Committee. And Senior Management Analyst Cynthia McCullough is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and members of the City Council. The City Council created the Community Projects Grant Review Committee to review applications and provide and provide funding recommendations to the City Council on the distribution of grant funds of up to $150,000. The review committee is comprised of seven representatives from each of the four neighborhood councils, the Youth Council, the Council on Aging, and the community at large. During their regular March meetings, each advisory board nominated a representative. And the recruitment for the community at large member position began on February 16 and ended on March 1. Councilmember Littler and Councilmember Ayala conducted interviews on March 11 and nominated one representative. A total of seven nominees are being recommended to serve on the review committee with terms commencing immediately and concluding when the City Council awards the fiscal year 2526 funding. A few of the nominees are present this evening. And as I call your name, please come forward. Representing Neighborhood Council Number One, Laura Hurd; representing NC2, Teresa Ramirez; representing NC3, Ravithi Puthada; representing NC4, Bobby Calderon; representing the Council on Aging, Al Brown; representing the Youth Council, Aman Surdrith; and representing the Community at Large Member, Jerry Placeras. It is recommended that the City Council approve and the mayor appoint these seven nominees to the Community Projects Grant Review Committee. This concludes the report, and staff is available for questions.
Thank you very much. We have a volunteer pen for each of you. Al probably has a whole arm-length full of them. You need more. You'll be our back sock. Thank you very much. Here's one for you. We thank you and appreciate you. This is one of the hardest jobs that you guys have just volunteered for. We have a limited amount of money and multiple worthwhile nonprofits that all will benefit from whatever your decisions are. So, we really, truly thank you for all of that and for volunteering. So, do you have a motion?
Yes, I'd love to make a motion. And I will say, if all the candidates are as superlative as Gerald was, I mean, there were... Anyway, we had the opportunity of interviewing. It's going to be an amazing committee. But I would love to make a motion to nominate and accept all seven of the participants of that committee.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Call for the vote? Yes, please. The motion passes unanimously? Thank you all. And we look forward to seeing what your decisions are going to be. So, thank you again.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 3A2, Selection of Two City Council Members to Conduct Americans with Disabilities Act Paratransit Advisory Committee Interviews. And Public Works Director Ron Fuchiwaki is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and Councilmembers. The ADA Paratransit Advisory Committee is comprised of seven members appointed by the City Council, including five member-status appointees and two alternate-status appointees. The committee advises the city on issues such as service policy, availability, and accessibility associated with the transportation of persons with disabilities. One member position and one alternate position on the committee will become open when terms expire on April 30, 2025. Two applications were received during the recruitment process. It is requested that the City Council select two council members to interview and nominate two applicants to the ADA Paratransit Advisory Committee. That concludes the staff report.
Any questions of staff?
I noticed that Councilmember Judge and Mayor Thomas performed the interviewing last time. I'm certainly willing to do it again, but I don't want... I'm willing to do it, but I don't want to... If others would like to have that opportunity, I don't want to.
One of my committee assignments is the ADA Paratransit Advisory. So, I would volunteer to do that interview.
I move to appoint Councilwoman Littler and Councilman Ayala to this committee.
Thank you. Call for the vote, please.
The motion passes unanimously? Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 3A3, Interview and Appointment of a Planning Commissioner and Deputy Environmental Services Director, Sean Gibson, is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and City Council members. At the February 24, 2025 City Council Meeting, the City Council appointed Joseph D. Ayala to the City Council to fill the district going council vacancy as a result of DZ Kavanaugh's being appointed mayor. With Councilmember Ayala's appointment, he must now nominate for appointment or reappointment an individual to the planning commission to serve concurrent with his City Council term of office. At this time, Councilmember Ayala may nominate a person to serve on the planning commission. And the council may interview the nominee at this meeting. With a majority vote, the mayor may appoint the nominee. The prospective nominee, as noted in your staff report, is in the audience tonight for nomination and questions. If appointed tonight, the nominee will be seated immediately for the upcoming planning commission meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ayala.
Thank you. So, Mr. Lee Kennedy had been appointed by our mayor, Mayor Thomas. And I did have the opportunity to either select someone new or to meet Mr. Kennedy, who I had never met before, and to have the... And go ahead and have him continue in his role. So, we did have a meet and greet. I think he thought we were meeting for coffee, but it became an actual interview. Not just an interview from me, but from him. From him to ask me questions and for me to ask him questions and to see if this was going to be a good partnership, because that's what I see it as, is a partnership. And after that meeting, which lasted over an hour, we came to the conclusion together that it would be a good relationship. And so, I would like to move to approve and the mayor to reappoint Lee Kennedy to the planning commission for a term to become effective immediately.
Second?
I apologize, council. Under your municipal code, you do... It requires that you conduct an interview, even if brief, until before the nomination.
Mr. Kennedy, would you please come forward?
More questions.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Mr. Kennedy, you live proximity close to me. And I find that your addition of a dog-watering area outside is close to causing a sidewalk hazard. Would you like to address that to the committee?
Yeah, well, our family, we like dogs. And we kind of got it off of the sidewalk and around in a little corner area there. And it's very well-accepted by the neighbors, especially walking uphill towards your house.
I tend to agree with that answer. So, this candidate is fine with me.
Thank you, Councilmember Rhodes. Councilmember Littler.
I'm delighted that you have been renominated. If I'm not mistaken, you have now served for two-plus, two-and-a-half years in this capacity. I'm just curious what your takeaway, having served on the planning commission for two-plus years? Are any words of wisdom to us or thoughts about that whole experience that would allow you to be willing to continue?
Well, first of all, I want to say how impressed I am with staff in general from the planning commission and how well-prepared they are for each one of these items that comes up. Communication level is extreme. I sat on appraisal subcommittees, congressional subcommittees. And the preparation is the same at that level that this city displays in their staff. Working with city council has been just more one-on-one as these projects come through. And I've really enjoyed this aspect, like my other volunteers' activity with the City Budget Advisory Committee and the Police Foundation, and giving back to the city. And thank you for the opportunity, Councilman Ayala, to move forward with this again.
Delighted that you are willing to continue and that you would nominate.
May I have a nomination?
I actually wanted to make one more comment. And this is not to use to Councilmember Ayala. We had turmoil with the passing of Fred and the moving around of things. Having Mr. Kennedy continue has a continuity of service that I think we desperately needed, and it is appreciated. I've known Mr. Kennedy for quite some time. Has been and will continue to do an outstanding job. But more importantly, I think that continuity of that team was really important. So, thank you for that.
Yeah. And I did take that into consideration as well. And then, I also found that Mr. Kennedy was very smart. And he knew what he was talking about and specifically what we're asking him to do. And so, I really felt that he was the right one to continue in this position.
Do you want to go ahead and nominate?
I will. I will once again move to approve and the mayor reappoint Lee Kennedy for the planning commission for a term to become effective immediately.
Second.
Call for the vote?
The motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you very much. And I look forward to serving. Thank you.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 3B1, Presentation by Fire Marshal Joe Morelli of the Ventura County Fire Department Regarding the Fire Hazard Severity Maps. Oops.
Good evening. Is there a clicker?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and City Council. Thank you for having me. I'm going to keep this brief. But if you have any questions at the end, I'm glad to answer any questions. My name is Joe Morelli. I'm the Ventura County Fire Marshal. I'm here to talk with you about Cal Fire's recent release of local responsibility area maps for the county of Ventura and across the state. So, first, I'm going to tell you what a local responsibility area is. There are state responsibility areas. Those are areas where the state of California is responsible financially for fire suppression and prevention. A local responsibility area is where local unincorporated cities, urban areas, agriculture... It's basically local government responsibility for fire prevention and suppression. A little bit of history on the maps. The state, in the 1980s, we had some catastrophic wildfires. Nothing like what we've seen recently. Those fires led to the development of or issuance of new laws that required the state, Cal Fire, to map state responsibility areas and then later, local responsibility areas. These mapped areas affect where home hardening and parcel hardening requirements apply. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. But in 2003, there was another fire, the Cedar Fire in San Diego. It claimed 25 lives and 2,800 structures. And that was sort of the beginning of some of the massive wildfires that we've seen these last 20 years. After that, home-hardening building codes were created, which applied to certain mapped areas, those LRA, very high-fire hazard areas, as well as the state responsibility areas. And then, in 2010, the state issued... That was the last time that the state issued the local responsibility area maps. These maps, just to provide a little information on this, because these are the types of questions that we're already getting. These maps are developed by Cal Fire. It's based on the fuel-weather topography in an area. They look at fire history from 1991 to 2020. So, it doesn't include the last five years. These maps have been years in the making. And it's just... It's sort of coincidental that they were issued within a couple of months. They were planned to be issued in January. The Palisades and Eden Fire delayed that by a couple of months. And we just received the maps in March. So, I'm glad to talk about that more if anyone has any questions at the end. But I'll move on. So, the state law, Public Resources Code, requires Cal Fire to propose maps, and it requires local agencies to adopt the maps. I mentioned that fire history is part of the consideration for the development of these maps. As I mentioned, it's fuel-weather topography. They have computer-based modeling that the state uses. They look at statewide fire history. They look at local fire history. So, 15 of the top 20 most destructive wildfires in California history have occurred in the last decade. That accounts for 57,000 structures and 184 lives lost. The Palisades and Eden Fire alone were over 16,000 structures destroyed. While that's not in our county, it's impacted some of the regulations that I'm going to talk about tonight. During the Thomas Fire, the Thomas Fire occurred in 2017. And we lost over... From that fire, as a county, outside of our county, over 1,000 structures. At that time, that fire was the largest in California history. And that has since been surpassed at least 10 times. So, things have changed. So, they do take up to, as I mentioned, the 2020 fire data into account. The Camarino, the recent fire, the mountain fire, that wouldn't have been accounted for with these maps. So, I'm just going to talk about what's already been completed. The state fire marshal released the maps on March 10, the updated LRA maps. And what's different this time is that in the past, the state would only map a local responsibility... Sorry, responsibility areas that were very high-fire hazard. This time, they added in the high and the moderate. The moderate would be considered what... Like, an area where ember intrusion zone. As I think everyone is well-aware, and I probably don't even need to say, with some of these fires, the embers can spread two to four miles out. So, the law requires making these maps available to the public within 30 days. We provided... It was our goal to get it out within a week, and we did. So, we have a map here on display at City Hall. This is available on our website as well. And then, I'll show you where you can find the map, because what most people want to know is if they're in the area or not. So, this is the 2010 map.[1710.41] And it's hard to tell when you're looking between the two what's changed, but I'll give you some stats here, just to show you what has changed in Simi Valley. So you'll notice that in 2010, there was just red areas. That's because those were the very high fire hazard areas. And as I mentioned, the state, for the first time, has mapped the high and the moderate hazard areas. So the very high fire hazard areas expanded, and then they added in the high and the moderate. And then this is just a snapshot of the proposed maps that came out in March. It's hard to tell, just looking at that, what exactly has changed. The state has added a tool that will, it allows you to toggle between the two, the old map and the new map. But just to share, as far as what's changed in these areas, Simi Valley had a total increase in mapped areas of 68%. So the very high fire hazard area increased by 14%, and then adding in the moderate and the high, you have a total increase with all of them of 68%. Countywide, it's a bit higher, 108% increase to mapped areas. This is quite a bit more than even we anticipated, and we didn't have this information until the day that state released it, and that was the same for all the fire departments in the state. So quite an increase. And you might be asking, what is a fire hazard map? So fire hazard, it's looking at the fire hazard in the area. It's the physical conditions that create a likelihood for the spread of a wildfire, and they look at sometimes 30 to 50 years of data. CAL FIRE said that they're looking at 1991 to 2020, so that is about 30 years. A risk is really what damage a fire could do to an area under specific conditions, and it takes into account what you do to your home. So this is different mapping than insurance mapping, which one of the common questions we get is, well, is the insurance going to use this? I don't know how the insurance industry is going to use this. The official statement from the California Insurance Commissioner that came out yesterday was that the insurance industry is using entirely different maps based on risk versus these maps, which are based on hazard. So these hazard maps affect when someone is building a structure in one of these areas. There's home hardening requirements for ember intrusion-resistant attic vents, non-combustible or limited combustible siding, dual-pane windows, and then also defensible space in the property. But we don't have control over what the insurance industry does, but our role in the fire department is to educate. I'll share a little bit more about that with you and what you can do as a citizen here in the city. So I'll keep this up here for a moment. If anyone wants to take a look, this will take you to CAL FIRE's Viewer of the Maps. It has the toggle between the old and the new maps. This is available on our website as well, but I'll leave that up there for a moment for anyone who wants to take a look at that. And next, I'm going to talk about what the implications of this are. So the very high fire hazard areas, the laws that apply are the 100-foot defensible space, which we've had here, those requirements in the county since 19, I think it was 1935. So over 90 years, we've had defensible space requirements. I think it increased in the 90s to 100-foot. At first, it started with 30 feet, went up to 60, went to 100 feet. Home hardening, this is the California Building Code, those home hardening requirements that I mentioned. And then a law that was passed in 2020, Assembly Bill 38 for Real Estate Disclosure, and requiring an inspection from the fire department when selling a property. The seller is required to get an inspection from the fire department and a report that demonstrates that they're meeting the defensible space laws. In the high fire hazard areas, Assembly Bill 38 also applies, as well as the 7A requirements, but the 100-foot defensible space right now, as like an annual program or a year-round program, it doesn't exist. It's just when you're selling the property, there are some requirements that apply. Something that is a bigger implication than any of that that's coming, and this is on the heels of the recent wildfires. Governor Newsom issued an executive order requiring the State Board of Forestry to speed up the development of regulations that are law-required for the last few years. The Board of Forestry is required to develop regulations for really addressing the weakest link in defensible space, which is the first five feet around the structure. So what that's going to mean is that by December of this year, the state is going to issue these regulations, which are going to apply not only to new construction, but also to all existing occupancies throughout the state that are in at least the very high fire hazard area. So anything combustible within five feet of a structure, what they're looking at right now is what's going to be allowed within that five feet and what's not. But for the most part, it's going to be if it can burn most vegetation. They're even looking down to a granular level of, you know, what kind of pots can someone have? That's really out of our control. What I mean by that is plastic pots or clay pots. The reality is, there is a reason why we've lost so many structures, and there is a reason behind this. As hard as it is, it's really one of the easiest things to do, removing these things away from the home, but it's also one of the hardest things to do because of the emotional attachment that, you know, many of us have, myself included, you know, with the things around our home and what we're used to. So that's going to be a tough one, but that's coming. And these mapped areas, if someone is in a very high fire hazard area, it's going to apply, there's going to be a three-year timeline to comply with that. And the fire department will have some enforcement responsibility with enforcing those state regulations. So I did want to talk a little bit about what we are already doing in the county, and then I want to talk about what residents can do. So I just want to share a little bit of information. There's a whole lot more out there, but the Ventura County Fire Department inspects 19,000 structures annually for defensible space. We do landscape review, plan reviews during new construction. We already have had an ember intrusion-resistant zone, now non-combustible zone, for new construction apply. That's a lot easier than when you're looking at existing occupancies. We have a wildland unit that does fuel reduction projects throughout the county, prescribed burns. They do, they use the goats to do grazing, everything at their disposal. They maintain all of our fire roads, about 66 miles of fire roads maintained last year. Outside of those programs that we've had for years, really what's changed in the last couple of years is that we've had quite a bit more community engagement. Our goal countywide was to increase the number of firewise communities, which I'll talk a little bit about, or to support the increase up to 20. So we went from four up to 29 in a matter of a two-year period, which is pretty significant. We're part of a wildfire collaborative with the Fire Safe Councils, and that group meets quarterly, really with the same goals for wildfire preparedness and mitigation. And then we're on the Board of Forestry Fire Risk Reduction Community List. As far as what that means, the, sorry. The reason why that matters is the state has come out with Safer From Wildfire Regulations through the California Insurance Commissioner's Office that requires insurance companies to consider 10 different mitigating factors of a structure for someone to help get them a discount on their insurance. One of those is that the area, the county or the city, so in this case, the county, if you're on the community risk reduction list, which comes from having really a model program. So we're one of 50 in the state that have this designation. Being a firewise community is another one of those mitigations. And then there's the mitigations that someone can apply to their individual home, essentially that five-foot. The insurance industry is already, in many cases, applying a five-foot non-combustible, meaning nothing that can burn within five feet of the structure. That has nothing to do with the fire department requirements, but that is already happening with some of the insurance companies and how they're applying this law. So basically gravel, paving stone, dirt within the five feet. That's how they're looking at it, again, separate from what the state, the work the state is doing. We also work with the wildfire collaborative in obtaining grants, and there are several other partners that we have. I'm not going to list them all right now. So as far as what the community can do, I think looking to see if your home is in one of these mapped areas, specifically the very high fire hazard area, the high, where most of the requirements apply, the community can get involved with Fire Safe Councils. Fire Safe Councilors are nonprofit. Their really, their purpose is to engage the community in wildfire resiliency and preparedness. They also apply for grants, which homeowners sometimes have access to, and they do home wildfire assessments. And the reason that's important and how that's different from what the fire department does is we do have an enforcement responsibility. So when someone advises to their home, the difference here is that someone can call and they can get an anonymous inspection through the Fire Safe Council for a home wildfire assessment, and they can tell you, here of those 10 mitigating factors that I mentioned, they can tell you, here are the ones that apply to your home. Now, we do that sometimes, but sometimes people aren't comfortable having someone with enforcement responsibility come to their house. So we partner with the Fire Safe Council. We don't know where these are done. Someone can get a wildfire assessment done on their house, and we never know about it, but the homeowner knows. And if you don't get it there, you might get something from your insurance if you haven't dealt with that already. And in many cases, the insurance industry, even they are not aware of the Safer From Wildfire Regulations. So the more the homeowners can do to be familiar with that, the better prepared they will be to talk with their insurance agent if they are having trouble with their insurance, get educated on that, see which of those features apply to their home. And again, as I mentioned, of those 10, one is, so eight of them are really parcel and home hardening level. One is a community level, that's a firewise community. And then being on the State Board of Forestry, that's like a countywide designation. So we have that countywide designation. And then for the areas of the community that have a firewise community, what we found is that those communities are a lot more educated on all of these other requirements. That's the local support, really, that's in place for homeowners, in addition to anything that we can do for you. So there is, what's different about the state law and where it was 10 years ago, there was an appeal process. The state removed that. So by state law, it's, we really don't have a choice in, by state law, the county is required to adopt the maps as proposed. We can add to the mapped areas, which we are not proposing to do, but we cannot take away or lessen those. So while there's a public comment period, and everyone is welcome to submit comments, really what we're going to do with those comments is we're going to forward them to the state so that people's voices can be heard, but there's no action that we can take as a result of those comments. So I'm glad to answer any questions, and thank you for having me.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the Councilmember Rhodes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Fire Marshal, for being here, an incredibly important topic. Synergies being what they are, I sit on the Community Economic and Human Development Committee for SCAG, and our two presentations were on home hardening and different organizations like Fire Safe that can come out and do these trainings, not only for people, but for our own Emergency Operations Center folks to do training on training. And we had one presentation from Calabasas. Their all-volunteer community organization came up with their own app for disaster preparedness and including entire online lessons for how to do home hardening and so on. So your point is well-taken. Regardless of any insurance company outcomes, knowing that you're in one of these zones and doing what you can to harden your own residence, that's a smart thing to do. And to echo what you said, I know that that zero-to-five-foot zone is going to be emotional and problematic for some people, but so is losing your home. And so I think it's time to face some realities that if you live in one of those zones, don't have stuff that can burn right next to your house. And the more we can get that message out, the better. These maps are interesting, somewhat political, but just from the information standpoint, the common sense standpoint, having the maps, knowing where you live and knowing that you should harden, I think that's a great thing, and I appreciate you bringing the maps to us and just having this conversation about home hardening, because I think it's essential. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions from the council? Councilmember Ayala?
Thank you. Just a couple of clarification, not clarification questions, just questions. You had mentioned that 2010 was the last time the map had been updated. And my question is, what triggers the map to be reconfigured?
So there's the changes in, really, the wildfire history would be one of the main areas. As I mentioned, the last decade, we've seen 15 of the 20 most destructive wildfires in California history. So that would be probably the main difference. And then also, the state has new computer-based modeling that's improved quite a bit since 2010. They are, CAL FIRE is required by state law to occasionally, I don't think it says specifically 10 years or 15 years, but CAL FIRE has been talking about these maps coming. I think it's been six months out for the last five years, and they finally did it. So here we are.
And then you had mentioned there's a three-year window for people to comply with that, the zero, forget the technical term for it. But what about the other regulations, like if someone were to do a remodel next week, would the regulations that are put in for like home hardening and stuff already apply?
They already apply just by local ordinance. We've had an ember intrusion-resistant zone since 2019. If someone does an addition onto a property of a certain size, if it's over 150 square feet, that at least the area around where they're doing the work requires the Zone Zero, non-combustible. Part of how we got the designation from the State Board of Forestry on the community risk reduction list is we do have some things that by local ordinance for the last several years have been in place, and we get credit for that. So they're not looking for just the minimum. They're looking at communities that are going above and beyond what's required by state law. The new construction is easier to deal with because you get it when it's new, and someone's not spending extra money for that. It's the existing that's going to be really tough. So we'll have more information in December. The state is still developing the regulations. But to answer your question, it does apply to new construction and to additions over a certain size.
Very good. Thank you.
Councilmember Lister?
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation. You made a statement which, and I think ultimately, a lot of people, of course, are concerned about what this means for their insurance and getting insurance and insurance rates, et cetera. And you made the statement, and I expect most will anticipate that this map is related to what their insurance rates or getting insurance, although you made the statement that this map is based on hazards, and that the state has claimed that the insurance maps that they use are based on risks. I'm trying to understand really the difference between hazards and risks. And if I were to try to explain that to a constituent, what would I say exactly?
So the hazard is the area that you're in. The risk is your specific home and what you've done to harden your home. So if you take those 10 different measures that the insurance commissioner has put out, the chances of survival of your home, defensible space combined with home hardening, it increases your chance of your home surviving by 60%. That's the latest data that's out. That would be more risk-based maps. They do look at areas overall, but then they look at, okay, if there's specific features on a house that that house has, and it's different from the neighbors, they even take that into account. These hazard maps, they don't take that into account. The hazard maps are looking at how the fire can spread within the area, what the wildfire hazard is. The risk maps are looking at what's the risk of losing structures. So that's the difference. The risk model is, will we lose structures? The hazard maps are, yeah, there's an element of that, but it's more geographic. It doesn't take into account measures that someone has taken on their own property.
Okay, I appreciate that explanation. Are those risk maps available for people to, that are being used by insurance companies? I've yet to see them. Is that?
I haven't seen them, and I've tried to, I've asked. They have their mapping, they don't, maybe some of it's out there, but, yeah.
I suspect that was the answer, but, okay.
And sometimes the reality is, sometimes the insurance industry, some agents are more aware, some don't even know about those Safer From Wildfire Regulations. are more aware, some don't even know about those safer from wildfire regulations. I'll just tell you, I know people personally, they worked through this process, they got a letter from their insurance saying, hey, we're going to drop you or you're moving to Fair Plan. And they were able to educate their insurance agent on the, the features that their home had and their defensible space and point to those safer from wildfire regulations. And they were able to keep their insurance or they were able to, you know, mitigate or reduce the cost. I'm not saying it's guaranteed, I'm just telling you, you know, from what I've seen people dealing with, the more educated you are on those regulations, you might be the one educating your insurance agent and really advocating for yourself in order to get the best deal on your insurance.
Got it. Thank you.
Councilwoman, if I can add a little piece of information to that on risk maps. Part of the presentation that was given to us and what communities are starting to do is for the benefit of their agents or the insurance companies say, here's how many homes in our area have gone through the hardening process. And they're creating maps that are showing, if it's just one house, okay, the house is protected, but you get 50% of the houses hardened, now you have a hardened community. And that can be presented forward. There's no legislation currently on that, there's no risk map that I know from the insurance company, but it's a compelling story to, to tell. And so individuals are using these apps to say, I live in a fire-safe community that's been X percent hardened.
Thank you.
There are cases where, like Paradise, Paradise is, I think it's been five years since the fire wiped out the community. In a way, they had a clean slate. And so they are, not only have people rebuilt to the latest standards and some have still dealt with insurance problems, they've had to go above and beyond that through Fire Safe Councils and through community engagement, really putting gravel around homes, getting grants. And from what I heard earlier today in a presentation from that community group up there, it made a difference, quite a difference. So I mean, I'm not going to guarantee it or we don't have control over it, but you know, the more we can do, each of us, all of us, in our own homes, in our communities, collectively all together, it can make a difference. We just don't know how much yet. So, but we've got to try and, and the benefit of that is that these, these home hardening and parcel hardening standards, they, they do save homes.
Thank you. Following along those lines, I was talking with Councilmember Engler over in Thousand Oaks, and they recently did something in their city. Maybe it was fire-safe classes or hardening the homes. It's off, a little off topic, but are you aware of that or I can always reach out to him again?
We're doing so many presentations right now ourselves. I don't know, I'm losing track of how many there are. I'm glad to talk with you more about that.
Right. I, he mentioned it, that they, the city itself did something along with the fire departments. I'll reach out to him and get more information. It was a risk asking you, sorry about that.
And if I could, just, I know the question's coming to the gentleman here about the power lines. We don't, the fire department doesn't regulate that, but I can tell you that there's, Southern California Edison does have a program for undergrounding lines. I don't, I'm not too familiar with it, but I know the information's on their website where communities can advocate for undergrounding power lines. But that's why I had to share on that topic. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. We really appreciate it. And thank you, G. Fortin, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 3C1, informational presentation by Youth Employment Services Advisory Board, Gloria, Chair Gloria Bowman.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and members of the City Council. I'm Gloria Bowman. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. As Chair of the Youth Employment Service Advisory Board, YES, I have the honor of presenting our annual informational report. The Youth Employment Service Advisory Board, established in 1982, is comprised of 15 members and up to three alternates that include representatives of government agencies, schools, employers, and community members at large to discuss employment issues that relate to youth. Simi Valley is one of the few cities in the region that offers this type of service to prepare our young people for the jobs of the 21st century. Our board's continued focus has been on workforce development of youth and connecting them with various career pathways, as well as promoting the hiring of teens and young adults as they enter the economic ladder. The following represent a few programs held to accomplish these goals. Annually, YES co-hosts a summer workshop series at the Simi Valley Public Library that last year included the following. One, the Entering the Workforce with a Focus on Entrepreneurism Workshop covered employment options for teens, workplace ethics and safety, work permits and types of jobs permitted, as well as job readiness. This also included a mini-volunteer fair with six nonprofit in attendance and made a short presentation to the participants. Number two, Building a Resume and/or Brag Sheet for Jobs College and Scholarship Applications Workshop. This focused on resume writing basics, what is a brag sheet and how it differs from a resume, and what young job seekers could do to build an impressive resume and/or brag sheet. Participants were also provided small group assistance by volunteers from the business community and YES Advisory Board in drafting a minimum of two work history items. Three, the Interview Skills Workshop covered how to successfully complete an application, appropriate interview attire, basics of confident communication, common interview questions and how to answer them, and the interview follow-up process. Volunteers from local businesses conducted multiple mock interviews and provided valuable feedback with all participants. Four, Navigating the Workplace and How to Succeed Workshop was also provided. YES also hosted a volunteer fair at the Simi Valley Public Library for community members of all ages. This free event was designed to connect local nonprofits with potential volunteers. Twenty-four nonprofit organizations attended to provide information and offer opportunities. Our major program is teaching essential work interview skills workshops. In February, over 1,000 local sophomore students received training on work permits and labor laws, application completion, digital first impression, follow-up procedures, networking basics, the interview process and common questions, resume writing, workplace ethics, and best practices on leaving a job. Each participant also received a comprehensive, up-to-date supplemental interview skills workshop handbook to keep. Our entrepreneurship committee has been on hiatus this year, but had been developing an entrepreneurship-focused podcast series featuring successful entrepreneurs and topics to help budding entrepreneurs in launching their business ideas. They were able to record one episode of the podcast, but it hasn't been released yet. The first Job and Career Expo was held in 1987. Over the past 37 years, more than 26,500 youth have been served. Our 37th annual event is scheduled on Saturday, April 26th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. We will be holding the event in a true library takeover fashion for the fourth year at the Simi Valley Public Library. We are co-hosting the library takeover event with the Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce and Simi Valley Public Library and sponsored by the Rotary Club of Simi Sunrise. The free event will feature practice interviews, onsite interviews with employers, exposure to career options, internships and volunteer opportunities, assistance with completing job applications, workstations to submit online job applications, help writing resumes, and an abbreviated financial literacy workshop for teens and young adults, led again by our students and supported by members of J.P. Morgan Chase. And a new Fast Track Your Success Career Skills and Alternative Education for any pathway, college, career, and beyond, will be hosted by the Simi Valley Unified School District. Last year, more than 30 employers and organizations participated in the fair, among with more 400 teens and adult job seekers that attended. This year, we anticipate similar numbers. The link for businesses to register to participate is available on the city's website. Much of what our board is able to accomplish would not be possible without key collaborations with the Chamber of Commerce, the local business community, the Simi Valley Unified School District, Rotary Club of Simi Sunrise, and numerous community volunteers. Our call to action, so to speak, is to encourage more local employers to hire youth, whether paid or as unpaid interns, to provide critical opportunities for our youth to build job skills, to offer shadow experiences to provide youth exposure to various career opportunities, and to get involved by participating in our job and career fair. This results in a robust and skilled labor force. Thank you for continuing to support the work of the YES Advisory Board and YES program. We invite each of you to come and witness the work of the board does by stopping by the Job and Career Fair on Saturday, April 26th, or join us at our regular board meetings at 8:15 a.m. on the third Wednesday of each month, June, August through June, in the City Hall Community Room. Thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have about our YES program.
Thank you, Gloria. Councilmember Littler?
Actually, this is not a question, but this is a testimonial that last year, my young adult son, who was job-challenged, grabbed his resume at the last minute, went down there, and thanks to that wonderful opportunity, went around, had a lovely conversation and was working by the end of the week, and he had been unemployed for a while, or let's just say, employment-challenged for a while. It was, it was a life changer for him. And so I just want to say thank you, that this really does make a difference for our young people in the community, and appreciate all that you do to represent. In fact, I have to just anecdotally share with the council, I bumped into Gloria last week over at Oakmont as the YES representative. She was there making sure that that business was aware of what, of their, of the services. So she, this woman keeps going, doesn't stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Rhodes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Gloria, I just want to say a personal thank you. YES was the first city committee that I cut my teeth on in terms of volunteering, and you were there then, you're there now. Your continuity of service is appreciated. On the job expo coming up, I have, I have one question, is there going to be good coffee?
No.
Wow, ouch.
There's going to be exceptional coffee.
Nice, excellent. So I'm happy to provide that. Anytime that I can help with this committee, I want to. And Ryan, thank you for inviting me to come and continue those presentations at the high schools, because the information and that booklet that you have created now is top-notch. It is, it's constantly revised and anybody, even if they didn't see the presentation, if they walk away with the booklet, it's going to be outstanding. And so thank you again for all the work that you guys do.
Thank you. Thank you, Gloria. You do a great job. We really, really appreciate you, and Ryan also, too. Thank you.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item four, public statements. During this Agenda Item Four, the City Council will hear public statements from the first 10 persons who have submitted speaker cards. After the first 10 persons have spoken, subsequent persons who submitted speaker cards will be called to speak during Agenda Item Six, which is a continuation of Agenda Item Four. Agenda Item Four and Six are times allotted for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments, and informational reports. Speakers will be called on in the order in which your card was submitted to speak to this public statement, item four, for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the City Council are requested to state their name and community residence for the record. Madam Mayor, unless you have any comments, we can begin public statements.
Please go ahead.
I will call the first three speakers. Gary Molly, Robert Isola, and Arisbeth Romero.
The lights will come on, it'll be green, and then yellow is 30-second warning, and the red, you're done.
So I answered to the green, right? I'm sorry, buddy, I'm kind of like, you know. Good evening, Kavanaugh and City Council. My name's Gary Molly, and as the CAL FIRE who was here, he kind of summed it up, but I have a couple of issues that would probably be interested in my question. When I had to go back and sit down was utilities underground. That would, you know, I know we're on a grid somewhere that some areas get shut off and some don't. So that's one of them. And then he talked about fire breaks. It's 10 feet, I think it's five feet, I'm not sure. It goes up to the property line where the residents have to, residents have to make sure that their stuff is all cleared out, their weeds and all that. But when you get up to the hills, you need a dozer. And that dozer can walk anywhere. It can come together, it can pull one side, but you can't go like this because you'll flip it. But anyway, that's the stuff that needs to be cleared would help out, not a prevention, but that would help out clearing some of the brush that hasn't burned for 50 years. I don't know, I'm not in the hills, but that's my address to that issue. So, and last but not least, are, are you doing the, is it under the area of currently due, and is it? Excuse me. Is this under review for the areas that are currently due, not having the utilities underground? So that's, that's it?
Thank you. We're not allowed to respond because this is public comment, but at the end, we'll make some comments.
So do I sit down again?
If you want to hear responses, yes.
Can I leave?
You can leave.
Okay. Good night, everybody. Thank you.
All right, good night.
But we will probably respond to your concerns at the end of all the speakers right now.
You can turn us on TV, Channel 10.
Thank you for your patience.
Yes, thank you.
My name is Robert Isola, this is my wife. We are the owners of the Delicious Food Truck here in Simi Valley, and we go to a lot of the events here in Simi Valley. When we're not doing events, we, we park in different locations, and the code enforcement has been giving us problems and telling us that we have, we are only allowed to stay in one area for 10 minutes and that we have to move to another location. And we're coming here to see if we can get you guys to change that to maybe a four-hour minimum. Like other cities, like Thousand Oaks, they allow their food trucks to park in, for a four-hour minimum per day. And we're here trying to get that changed to four hours at least per day. 10 minutes, we can barely even heat up our oil. One of our items is funnel cakes, so it takes a little time just to get our oil hot, and that's been an issue for us lately with the code enforcement. So we're trying to get that changed.
And we do have all our permits and all our city licenses and everything that, at first, they were trying to tell us that we need to get a solicitor's permit, but when I went to the Simi Valley Police Department, they told me that I didn't need it because I'm not knocking on doors. And then the other thing they said that I needed...
We have an oversized vehicle?
Oversized vehicle. So because of the size, but they said it didn't apply. I submitted the paperwork to get the permit also, and I got denied because they said it's not a RB. So, and now the issue is moving every 10 minutes, but that's not a thing because it takes longer for us just to get everything going.
So that's...
That's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate you being here.
The next speakers are Anthony Angelini... The next speakers are Anthony Angelini and then Jacqueline.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and staff. My name is Anthony Angelini. I am Director of Government Affairs and Tourism for the Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of the chamber, I'd like to thank the two volunteer award winners, Peter and Al Gray Choice. We're very lucky to live in a city with them in it. There is, as always, much happening at your local chamber, and I'd like to go through a few events and put a few things on your radar. There's a lot, but don't worry, if you don't catch it all in time, you can slow this down on YouTube, or better yet, you can go to our website, semivalleychamber.org or semichamber.org. Okay, let's do this. Wednesday, April 9th, at 8 a.m. via Zoom, will be our Economic Development Committee meeting with featured Speaker John Hamilton from the city, who will be discussing the new proposed sanitation rates. Also, Wednesday, April 9th, at 2 p.m., will be a ribbon-cutting for Regal Residence Senior Living's second senior home care in Simi Valley. This Friday, of course, is our monthly Good Morning Simi Valley Breakfast at 7 a.m. at the Best Western Pesado Royale. Come for the bacon, stay for the connections. Also, on Friday, the 11th, is our monthly shredding event from 1 to 4, $10 per box, no maximum, at the chamber offices. Tuesday, April 15th, is not only Tax Day, it is our Power Hour Networking Lunch at Greek House Cafe at noon. Wednesday, April 23rd, at 8 a.m., the Callegas Municipal Water District will be hosting a special in-person meeting of my committee, the Legislative Advocacy Forum, followed by a tour of their new, of their facilities over there at the Water District. Also, Wednesday, April 23rd, from 12 to 1:30, at the chamber offices, the Green Law Group will be hosting a Business Law Seminar to help business owners stay compliant with the changing regulations in California. Thursday, April 24th, the chamber's Emerging Leaders Committee will be hosting a lunch break at the Junkyard Cafe from noon to 1. I know I don't need to remind anybody about the Simi Valley Street Fair on May 3rd, but just for fun, I thought I'd point out that we have over 350 vendors, Free Kids Fun Zone sponsored by Adventist Health Simi Valley, and for the first time ever, we are adding a cornhole tournament. Finally, the retailer of the week is a holistic wellness company called The Mecca. Restaurant of the week is Tio's Cafe, and if any of you find yourselves dropping into any local businesses, snap a selfie, send it to me, and I will put a shout-out to you in my newsletter. Thank you all again, and if you missed any of that, again, the information is available at semichamber.org. Thank you.
And under your three minutes, please.
Very good, Anthony.
Thank you. So I just noticed this slide here for the first time. I didn't see last time. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Kavala, City Council members, staff. So I would like to follow up, follow through with my comment last, during the last meeting about the flight training areas that is now in Simi Valley, creating some noise issues and nuisances. So last week, actually, I saw a flight on Sunday flying at 1,800, 1,900, which is, which was, I was kind of, am I still in Van Nuys? Where am I living right now? But I remembered myself, I'm in Simi Valley, but that's still happening with creating nuisance. So I have also made, so I went away and also made some comments to FAA and complaints there as well. However, FAA called me, Federal Aviation Administrator called me, and they said that they are not responsible for anything, the, we need to call the flight school, we need to call the airport, the airport does not answer, the flight school say, so there is a whole bunch of disconnect with this issue and with, it's going to grow, it's going to grow for sure, because Van Nuys is proposing some land developing plan, the local community is trying to push that back and do something, but they do not listen, LAUA does not listen, it's gonna, they do not get any input from communities, they do what they want to do. This is the reality, unfortunately, it's very sad to say. So it's going to grow, and if they all come towards Simi Valley, instead of distributing the flight trainings to Santa Clarita, Simi Valley, Malibu, and the other areas, they go up and they straight to the west side to Simi Valley. I have mapped all of those because I had to, I, they make, they are noticeable, you cannot go on, they cannot go unnoticed because they are very loud. It's going to grow, and I think that's going to be a problem. Before it happens, we need to do something. Once that gone, once it's into effect, it will be very, very difficult to change. The local community also has made some, some progress, they took the matter into their own hands, so they made some meetings with the flight schools, with the Van Nuys's management, and it is clear that the flight schools do not know the impact of their operations on community. So it looks like seven or eight flight schools showed up, and then they said that they are going to do something. Van Nuys right now is trying to put landing fees, but that's going to be very, very small. So that is something that we cannot kind of hold on to, to make sure that the flight over Simi Valley is not going to grow. And also, they have made some meetings with Councilmember Imelda Padilla, so they are doing some stuff, but I really would like to Simi Valley to also make some initiatives in this regard. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, that was the last speaker. Next item on the agenda, City Council comments regarding public statements.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Oh, I was going to put myself in the queue, but I just didn't take it out from last time.
You're there now.
Excellent. I know Gary Molly left, and I hope that he got some information about undergrounding, and we can certainly talk about the dozer work that is already done, but undergrounding is desirable. I think that just some more research would show that undergrounding within our city doesn't necessarily prevent fires, it's outside the city where the fires start, and hardening that, that infrastructure would be, I think, even more beneficial, but his points well Isola, I hope I pronounced that right. I started my business in a food truck, and I am compassionate about your plight. Please get my information, I'd like to talk to you more about that. When I was serving, it was a Health Department rule that you couldn't be longer than four hours, and I don't know what our city ordinances are that would be different than Health Department rule, maybe it's because of the size of your vehicle or where you're choosing to set up, but I think it's something that we can look into, and I'd love to work with you on that because I'm sympathetic to the plight, having done it, and it's hard work, so. Mr. Angelini, I took it as personal challenge, and I did write down everything, every single event, and I can't read my own writing because I had to write fast enough, so I will go to the website for that. And I don't have any comment about the flight trainings, I know that came up last week, and we were thinking about, I don't know if we had a chance to look into that at all.
Staff did look into it. Really, we have no official jurisdiction over the Van Nuys Airport, and in staff's research, the FAA is the appropriate agency to complain to about noise complaints. Actually, I've got the link up on my phone right now, and there are Ombudsman, I can never say the word. Those people, and they have different regions that they're assigned to, to address noise complaints. So I'm disheartened to hear that the community member who contacted them was told that that is not who they should be speaking to, because that is, they have a specific area on their website to direct noise complaints to, and a form on their website to fill out to address that, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Littler.
Dubtelling off of that, I am sorry to hear what you're finding, and the one thought, I have a colleague that I know works for the airports, and I'm going to reach out to him to see if there's some, and he was in management at Van Nuys Airport anyway, I'm going to reach out just to see what influence he has or what, if he can direct us in other ways that we can possibly address this, but I appreciate what our city manager has found. Thank you, Anthony, always delightful having you share what the chamber's doing, we are fortunate to have a five-star chamber in our community, much appreciated. With, and I was the lovely couple that runs the Delicious Food Truck. Thank you for being here, I'm glad to hear that you're going to take that as a directive. My question was actually, was maybe going to direct it towards our attorney or the code. I know that we were very, we had some recent where we were very careful to make sure that positioning of food trucks did not in any way impinge on brick and mortars that were in location, so that was the main reason, I know that people should be moved, or was going to be moved, to be sure they were in a location. Does that, did that ordinance have a time restriction in it that I was not aware of at the time, but?
I do believe that there is a time restriction in the ordinance. What we can do is put together our memo to boxes about what the current ordinance does and does not do, and I do believe, I know that the folks who spoke did mention that they got their appropriate permitting and licenses, et cetera, and we can look into their particular situation, but you're right, there were some limitations to ensure that it wasn't imposing on brick and mortar businesses.
Very well, I leave that for you to, thank you for that information, and Rocky, follow-up. And yes, and I concur with what you were saying, I was going to mention to Mr. Molly that, thank you, we would love to have all of our utilities undergrounded, but unfortunately, it's often, these P S P S events are caused because Southern California Edison tells us it's the lines coming into the city that are dangerous, that go over the mountains, and those are the ones that really need to be hardened and undergrounded, et cetera, and, and yes, we've lobbied for it, we should continue to lobby for that, but that's not going to happen immediately, unfortunately. But thank you all for your comments, appreciate it.
Mayor Protem Judge.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to, really, I know we can't interact with public speakers, but I wanted to get some clarification on that was, because I'm not clear as to where the truck was parked, if it's parked on the street or if it's parked in a private parking lot where you have permission to be there, because that kind of determines what our ordinance says about those kind of things, doesn't it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Molly, thank you for expressing your concerns around the underground facilities, utilities, we're doing what we can. Isola, yes, I saw your truck at the Simi Royal game Friday night, my mother enjoyed your food, thank you. So it sounds like Councilmember Littler, or Councilmember Rhodes is going to assist on that. Anthony, you always get all that in right on the dot, I love it, thank you. And then I'm looking forward to, I will miss Street Fair, but I'm looking forward to some of the other things. And Jacqueline, thank you for bringing the flight school and the increase in the air traffic over us, and we'll be looking into that a little bit more. So thank you. And city manager?
Jacqueline, can you leave your contact information, if you haven't already, with the city clerk or with a staff member, to ensure that we can get in touch with you?
All right, thank you very much.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is public hearings. This is a time for testimony on public hearings, on the consideration of matters as presented on this agenda. Let the record show that due notice was given as required by law, and an affidavit to this effect is on file in the office of the city clerk. All comments submitted by email have already been provided to the City Council and will be made part of the record, however, they will not be read by the city clerk this evening. Speakers will be called on in the order in which their car was submitted to speak for this public testimony, item five, for a period of no more than five minutes each. Persons addressing the City Council are requested to state their name and community residence for the record. Comments shall be limited to matters relevant to the item on the agenda, and may be ruled out of order if comments are unrelated to the item. The reports of city staff relating to these matters shall be made part of the record of this meeting. If you challenge in court any of the City Council decisions made here tonight, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing. The time within which judicial review must be sought is governed by California Code of Civil Procedure, Section 1094.6. Item 5A, a public hearing to consider an appeal, CUP-S-2025-0004, of the Planning Commission's decision to approve conditional use permit number CUP-S-2023-0011, a request to construct a 24,290 square foot industrial building with accompanying outdoor storage on a 3.84 acre vacant parcel located north of 875 Cochrane Street and approximately 500 feet west of First Street, a determination that the project is exempt from the California Environment Quality Act and adoption of a resolution. The reading of the resolution is as follows. Resolution Number 2025-08, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley denying an appeal, CUP-S-2025-0004, and upholding the Planning Commission's decision to approve conditional use permit number CUP-S-2023-0011, a request to construct a 24,290 square foot industrial building with accompanying outdoor storage on a 3.84 acre vacant parcel located north of 875 Cochrane Street and approximately 600 feet west on First Street, and a determination that the project is exempt from the California Environment Quality Act, and Associate Planner Ruiz Chaparralain and Deputy Director Environmental Services, Sean Gibson, are presenting this item.
Before we begin, are there any ex parte communications to report?
Yes, well, I expect others, but I received a letter from Mr. Felbinger, who was concerned that we view a film that he's prepared for his, to present, to support his case, I corresponded back saying that I was going to make a motion that we wouldn't be allowed enough time to view the film. Subsequent to that, I believe he indicated all of us that the city has granted that time, but I wanted to communicate that that was all the communication I had through email, but did not view it at that time.
All right, thank you. Any others, no? All right, staff may now begin with the oral report for this matter.
Good evening, Mayor Kavala, and members of the City Council. Tonight's hearing is an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of a proposed industrial building and expansion of a local container manufacturing business located near 875 Cochrane Street west of the Chevy dealership. This site is the former Simi Valley Unified School District Administrative Headquarters. The front of the site was recently developed into, do industrial, into a new project. This project tonight is the rear of the property close to the 118 freeway. And the project was found compliant with required conditional use permit findings, code requirements of the Western Specific Plan, municipal code, and citywide design guidelines. At issue are the proposed construction and improvement activities within the existing easement on the west side of the property, which is the basis of the appellant's appeal. If I may have the screen for the presentation, then we'll turn it over to Associate Planners Ruiz Chaparralain.
Thank you, Sean. Good evening, Mayor Kavala, and honorable members of the City Council. As Sean mentioned, on January 22nd, the Planning Commission approved a CUP for a manufacturing and warehousing building and associated outdoor storage on the site highlighted in gray. The proposed project is located north of 875 Cochrane Street and south of the 118 freeway. It is about 500 feet west of First Street. The site is located in the Western Specific Plan. On February 4, 2025, Doug Felbinger, on behalf of Cochrane Properties, appealed the Planning Commission's approval to approve CUP-S, CUP-S-2023-0011, citing that the project plans infringe on his rights within the Western access easement. The site is surrounded by other industrial and office uses and the Simi Valley's Chevy dealership. The property is accessible from Cochrane Street via two access easement driveways, the eastern and western easements, highlighted in yellow on the screen. The easements extend from the subject property over the two southerly properties until they connect to Cochrane Street. The project was presented to the Planning Commission for development of a 24,290 square foot tilt-up industrial building, manufacturing, and outside storage on 3.84 acre site. The project will be the Coolit Rentals headquarters to manufacture, warehouse, and store the storage units. It will provide 51 parking spaces in addition to the 18 spaces in the Western access easement. It also provides 16% landscaping, meeting, and exceeding the Simi Valley Municipal Code and Western Specific Plan development standards. Some improvements will be made within the access easements, including paving, restriping of parking, and landscaping. On January 22, the Planning Commission reviewed the project and the findings for the CUP, and voted to approve the project with a 4-0-1 vote. The appellant holds a recorded easement, the Western access easement, granting rights of ingress, egress, and maintenance of landscaping and encroachments. I'll go back to the slide for you to see where the access easement is. On February 4, 2025, the appellant filed an appeal to the City Council, arguing that the project- arguing that the project plans infringe on their property rights within the Western access easement, as well as by including the easement on plans, constructing in the easement, and interfering with their easement rights. The appellant also argued that the Planning Commission's findings to approve CUP-S-2023-0011 violates the planning commissions, sorry, the planning condition A-4. The appellant also argues that the project impacts aesthetics and it's incompatible with the easement. Lastly, the appellant argues that the Planning Commission should have imposed conditions to protect the appellant's easement rights. In response to the appeal, staff responds as follows and as outlined on page three of the staff report. The appellant's dispute over specific easement rights is a civil matter and outside the scope of the CUP approval and review by the City Council. In response to the appeal, staff also finds that the easement is part of the legal law and must be included in the project's scope. It's also unclear how the project interferes with the intent of the easement as parking is still provided and access driveway will exceed the minimum Simi Valley Municipal Code standards. I will explain this further in the next slide. The Planning Commission's decision is supported by substantial evidence, and the appeal does not provide new evidence that would challenge said decision. There is no legal requirement for the Planning Commission to impose special conditions related to property rights. Those are protected by California law. This easement area highlighted in yellow in the image, the bottom image, currently includes 20 parking spaces, landscaping, and a driveway. will reconstruct and restripe within the easement for the appellant's use, excluding the required parking for the project. Improvements include paving and restriping access road and parking, landscaping and planters, undergrounding utilities and drainage, new irrigation lines, one tree, which is less than the ordinance size, to be removed for ADA and EV parking proposed. Staff reviewed the project for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act. The project is categorically exempt from CEQA pursuant to Section 15332 of the state CEQA guidelines. On screen are the alternative recommendations for the City Council on the matter. Staff recommends alternative number one, that the City Council deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission's approval of CUP-S-2023-0011. This concludes staff's presentation, and we're available for questions. For today's hearing, the appellant will have 20, will have 15 minutes to discuss the appeal, and the project applicant will also have 15 minutes to discuss their project, followed by any public testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff from City Council? Councilmember Littler?
I do have a handful of questions, but could we maybe put it back up, your slide that you were? So I guess my question, I drove out there even today and drove that whole area. And I'm trying to understand, yeah, that's the one I wanted to see. Obviously, you see how it stands currently. And then, and so I'm trying to understand, the parking that is already there and paved is part of the easement. Is that correct? That is, that is, that is adjacent to Mr., is it Felbinger? Felbinger? Mr. Felbinger's property. That there's parking, correct? That parking is already there, that's there?
Correct.
That's part of the easement? Is that, or is that?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So my question then becomes, are you requiring then the new, the applicant to repave all of that? Is that, and redo that landscaping that's currently there in place? Is that, who's responsible for that at this point?
The applicant's proposal is to install underground utilities of various site improvements, grading, drainage, utilities, and they intend to take up the asphalt and landscape improvements, do the underground work, the site work, and then restore essentially a parking lot with the planters in the same place.
So they will, okay, so they will be redoing that in what's already there, widening it and providing parking contiguous to the proposed industrial building. Is that correct?
Yes, the driveway portion will be fully widened. I believe it's 30 feet, sorry. It'll be 30 foot in width. Currently, there's some dirt area, which is not improved. And the parking spaces are essentially in the same row that will be placed back with some changes which are shown on the site plan, including the proposed handicap spaces, replacement landscaping, and I believe an EV charger.
Okay. And I'm just trying to understand, obviously, the easement. I mean, well, the report speaks about, let me sure use the language correctly. The report speaks about, in essence, who has primary control, the, I guess, the dominant easement owner versus the servient easement owner. I guess I want to understand, and maybe this is a legal concept, but who owns the land and who is responsible for directing that easement, I guess, is. Trying to understand that.
So, according to the recorded document, it is a non-exclusive easement. So both of the parties have rights and duties associated with the easement.
They both kind of own it, together, kind of?
Well, they both have rights in the easement.
Okay.
I also wanted to make one clarification. There's a difference between an easement and an encroachment. And with respect to the improvements or parking, that is in a different section and not necessarily the easement itself, if that makes any sense. It's within that area, but it is not the easement.
Okay, so then going back, so looking at, so help me understand. I always love to use pointer. I never get to use it. So, okay, so this, this is the actual easement, correct? The yellow is the easement? So if we superimposed it on what is currently there, it is, it is the paved area and then some of the dirt area, correct? That, just a little bit of the dirt area?
Approximately.
Okay, and so the new applicant is going to be, you're saying, in other words, what you're, the encroachment is maybe this parking? Is that what you're saying?
I can't tell from this. I just want to make sure that we understand that there's a difference between the rights that are outlined with respect to the access and ingress, access, ingress, and egress with respect to the access easement, and to maintain encroachments or improvements which include parking areas. Those are different sections, different sort of interpretations.
Fair enough. And I understand, just one question more, and then I'll certainly wait for the presentation. I understand that when the Planning Commission looked at this development, like the development, et cetera, but they were advised not to have any discussion about the encroachment at all. Is that accurate? And?
The Planning Commission was advised that it would be improper for them to weigh in on the individualized rights of the easement holders, because that is a power reserved for superior courts. Superior courts make a decision about what the rights are associated with an easement, not City Council and not the Planning Commission. We simply lack that authority.
But obviously, it's recorded on the plan, and we have the awareness that it's there, and it's understood that it's part of, going to be part of the development, correct?
That's correct. But with respect to what those individualized rights are, that's what essentially a court would determine, right? And so if we make decisions as to what those rights are, we are essentially substituting our opinion for what a court would say, or the interpretations about what that is. And you can tell from the package that was provided to the council, there are differences in opinion between the appellant and the applicant as to what those rights are. And that is exactly why that decision rests with the court and not with council.
And so that leads, I'm sorry, then that does lead me to another question. Back to you, Mr. Gibson. In the, in the packet that we are reading, is it, are, is the, are, is the appellant and the applicant very much at odds, or has the city advised them to plan in such a way that puts them at odd? At odds? Does that make sense?
Well, I could, I could refer to the appellant and the applicant who are here tonight to possibly make a presentation.
So I guess we'll wait for that presentation.
As to their concerns.
Okay, fair enough.
Mayor Protem, Judge.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just for clarification, for the people at home and other people know what we're talking about here. This driveway that is currently the easement, I guess, that allows access to Mr. Felbinger's property. Am I correct or incorrect?
Both properties, correct.
Yep. Not worried about the new property yet, because there's nothing there. But we do have a business on this side that is accessed from this easement. So that's true, right?
That's, that's correct.
Now, this driveway here, does that go to the rear of this property over here?
Yes, it goes to the appellant's property.
Is that going to be blocked by your new, by the new CUP?
No.
Okay, so that's still going to be there?
Correct.
This driveway and this access. And, okay, I'll wait for the presentation for any other questions. Thank you.
I have one question. I don't know if right now is the best time to go over it. Basically, in the same question, if our applicant, or excuse me, the appellant has already improved this property, this easement, right? With the parking spaces and the landscaping?
The appellant installed the parking and the landscaping, correct?
So it's an improve, improvement on the actual easement that the appellant did?
The easement is partially improved, maybe a good term.
Okay. So my, my common sense question is, why did we include that improved property in the applicant's whole request?
The applicant is the applicant and is the property owner of the property, and they must show all easements on his property existing and proposed improvements.
So that's where we come down to the law, where it says that you have equal rights on the easement. But yet, one's the owner and one has an easement.
Well, I wouldn't say they have equal rights. The question is, what rights do they have? And that's typically what a court would decide. I think what Mr. Gibson is explaining is that the city requires that all the information associated with the project be provided to the city, including any improvements that the applicant is suggesting that they want to make. And so that's why the easement would have been included as part of the plans.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Sean. Any other question? Oh, Councilmember Rhodes.
Yeah, I was going to save this question, Sean, until after we'd heard from the others, but it, maybe it's a question that will inform our listening. So the applicant had the opportunity to design this building and this, this new lot, this CUP, any, any number of ways, right?
Yes.
Yes. So they, they chose, and maybe rightfully so, to put utilities under this easement area, which is going to require removal of the asphalt and changing it. And so, so in order, in order for them to, to get this CUP, we, as the city, looked at it and said, does it comply with our codes and standards? Correct?
Yes, the Planning Commission reviewed it per our codes and standards, and based on the design, I think the applicant, who may be speaking tonight, could probably explain exactly what is necessary to tear up the existing driveway or not.
And so the, really, the question and the appeal here is in, is a question of why did we, the city, approve the change, I won't say the destruction, but the change of the, the easement area? And the answer is, we haven't approved that. We approved the plans that show that's what the applicant is intending to do. But then, if there is a dispute further than that of, can you do it or not? That comes back down to the, the rights of the easement, correct?
I would tend to agree with your statement.
Okay. And then I will, I'll tell you that before the meeting, I asked staff, are there any of the improvements in the easement area that we are requiring as a condition to approve the CUP? And, and the answer is no. But in order to build to the designs that were submitted, it's going to go through the easement. And so that might be what could come out of tonight's meeting is future litigation on what those rights are. But we are not absolutely requiring something to be done in those areas.
The way I respond to that is, if an applicant proposes landscaping, we ask or require that the landscaping complies with current landscaping standards. If the applicant's proposing a replacement parking lot, we ask that the dimensions comply with their current standards. There are, you'll notice a few things on the plan regarding accessible parking spaces. Those, as designed, would go through the building safety review process during plan check. So there may be future adjustments to the shape or the boundary of the disabled parking. Those are something the building officials look at, not specifically planning. So little adjustments that occur during plan check, but in general, the plan as designed appears to comply with all codes and requirements from a zoning and municipal code standpoint. And that's what was presented, and it's, the parking lot is substantially the same as the parking lot that's there in staff's, also as staff's opinion, so.
So in a sense, what we're saying is, if you build what you submitted, we're good with it. Whether you can build it or not might be a discussion you need to have with the appellant.
That's correct. If they came back with a different design, we will look at a different design.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. I'll wait for the presentation more to continue.
All right, thank you. Does the appellant wish to be heard at this time?
Came to be the way they are. I own the property to the west of the project being appealed. It was once part of a 19-acre tract, 19-acre tract of land owned by the school district. My family leased the western six acres from the school district and developed it with five industrial buildings. We also had a lease on the northeastern three acres that was to be our second phase. But by the time we got our five buildings up, the market had turned, and we were lucky to keep the five buildings we had, much less construct another 50,000 square feet. We had to give the lease back to the school district. A slight variation of that property is now what is owned by Mike Lowman. My buildings were constructed on the eastern property line of my land. So all the planters and parking to the east of the buildings were constructed within what is now the easement area. Originally, it wasn't an easement area, though. The property was all owned by the school district, so there was no easement. When we gave up the second lease, the 1988 easement agreement needed to be created. Fast forward to 2017, when I was negotiating the purchase of the land with the school district. It's not obvious that the buildings are constructed on the, on the property line when you go out there. In fact, I didn't even realize it until I went out there with some engineering drawings and found the property line marker. At the time, the school district was also in the process of subdividing and selling the rest of their property. I knew that there would be new projects coming, and I wanted to avoid the exact issue we're having with my property tonight. I think the landscaping and parking on the left-hand side of the road should look like it goes with the project on the left side. And the landscaping and parking on the right side of the road should go with that project. To that end, my attorney and I negotiated the language of the 2017 easement agreement, allowing my encroachments into the easement area. It's not just that I think the landscaping should be the same. I paid for the right. When I purchased the land in 2017, what Mike or Zarui think would look nice doesn't really matter in this instance. I'm the one who paid for the right to say how it should look. Dick Darling, the developer of Parcel A, fronting on Cochrane Street, also tried to alter my encroachments. But after I spoke up about my rights in the easement, he backed off. The city didn't insist that he violate my rights in the easement. So it was puzzling to me, what was at play? Why were the city and Mike so insistent that my encroachments be altered when the language was so clear? was so clear? After all, it would cost Mike thousands of dollars to alter my encroachments. And why would the city like my project to look like it was built right on the property line when there are requirements for landscaping to be all around buildings? The landscaping I installed was required with the development of my project. The answer is that the northwestern corner of Mike's property is the best location he has for a freeway sign. The only way the city can get the sign there is to either get my approval or deteriorate my rights within the easement to a great enough extent that I'd have difficulty exercising my rights in court. City staff have worked pretty hard to keep all references to the Auto Center freeway sign out of the public record as it relates to this project. Although I mentioned it in my statement to the Planning Commission, no one had anything to say about it. But there's one mention of it that slipped through the cracks. It was in Mike's letter that was incorporated into Exhibit Three of the staff report, which will be made reference to in the video. Also, I've made a public records request, and among the information revealed were conceptual drawings of the Auto Center freeway sign. It was created on July 25th, 2023, during the time this project was being discussed with the city. Just like he did a year ago, the city attorney kept me from making a copy of the document because it's copyrighted. He knew my purpose in obtaining the copy was for public discuss, discussion and is a fair use of the plan. I don't believe the city attorney's purpose was to protect a copyright. I believe it was to hide information from the city council. We also have my declaration where I signed under penalty of perjury that Mike told me the freeway sign was required by Brian Gabler in order to do the project, and that I personally talked to Brian Gabler about the freeway sign. Yet, even though we turned in the declaration in my response to the memorandum in opposition more than a week before this hearing, they didn't somehow make it into the online data that goes with this agenda item, I don't believe it was merely an accident. The effect was to keep the documents out of the permanent online public record. We need a lot better transparency than that. Please take all of the information into consideration. I also have one thing to say about a statement that I made in the video that the Planning Commission violated, the city's code of ethics by not addressing the matter at hand. While I do believe that it applies to the Planning Commission generally, it does not apply individually to Lee Kennedy, who tried to ask a question about the easement and was interrupted by the city attorney and abstained from voting. Lee showed real character in not just going along to get along. I appreciate the city council's consideration of my appeal. Now I have a short video to address the specifics of the issue at hand.
... get off track, it is up to our community leaders, including the city council, to put them back on track. My name is Doug Felbinger. I'm appealing the Planning Commission's approval of Mike Loman's project, which the city is using to steal my property for a freeway sign for the Auto Center. So, why the video? Well, even though I'm paying over $4,800 for the appeal hearing, the city is only allowing me five minutes to speak. This isn't the first time the city has tried to shut down the free exchange of ideas. Here is the city attorney at the Planning Commission hearing.
Chair, if I could just intervene. The Planning Commission is not the forum for deciding your private property rights. So the applicant has asserted that he has property rights. We're processing the land use application based upon that understanding. I understand there's a dispute between the two easement holders, and I also understand that one of the easement holders is seeking judicial intervention or potentially is doing so. That is the correct forum for that. The Planning Commission is not the place to be discussing or, or deciding property rights. So I'd encourage you simply to say along the lines of, we're figuring it out, and I think that's sufficient for answering the commissioner's question.
How totally inappropriate and wrong for the city attorney to not only interrupt the applicant, but to tell them what to say. The public hearing is exactly the appropriate forum to discuss how the project is incompatible with my property rights. Our court system is not supposed to be clogged with issues that should have been dealt with in a local public hearing. In fact, my attorney has told me it is required that we exhaust the city process before proceeding to court. So, we've heard from the city attorney that the topic of the easement is not to be discussed in the Planning Commission meeting. I'm sure he'll say the same at this city council meeting, but it is way outside the city attorney's purview to shut up members of the public or the elected members of the city council. It doesn't matter that Mike Loman indemnified the city or signed any other document. The city council is not relieved of its responsibility to deal with the matter at hand. It simply cannot issue entitlements for projects which are defective as to easements, encroachments, or omissions. The Planning Commissioners violated the city's code of ethics by not dealing with the substance of the matter at hand. Hopefully, the city council doesn't fall into the same trap.
Just so that you're not the last one to speak. I, I also like the project. I, I hate seeing the, the non-agreement on it. I, I really, I, I feel like both sides are very passionate about that, and, and I, I just can't, we can't discuss it, otherwise I would discuss it to death, but that's, that's not my position here. I can't do it. Otherwise, I'm going to get slapped.
I hope the city council will not be so easily deterred by the experts in this room. I think we have all learned in recent years that government experts who try to keep us from talking cannot be trusted. They have their agendas. Instead of simply taking what the city attorney says at face value, look to the recorded documents in the city's own written requirements. If we turn to the city's own staff report on page 12, item A4 says, "Any application and/or plans which are defective as to, without limitation, omission, dimensions, scale, use, colors, materials, encroachments, easements renders any entitlement null and void." So why is the project defective as to easements and encroachments? Well, it violates my rights within the easement and illegally builds on property I'm legally allowed to maintain in the easement. My First Amendment to the easement states in item three, "Grantees shall have the following rights for the benefit of my property, parcel one, and all future owners of parcel one, with respect to the use of the access easement." Item C of item three goes on to specifically state, "To maintain any encroachments of improvements from parcel one onto the access easement as existing on the date hereof, including, without limitation, any parking spaces or parking areas." Loman's attorney claims my right is merely a license that can be revoked by Loman at any time. This has caused Loman to make up all sorts of condescending rules. He actually says, "I'll have a 30-day window of opportunity to get my encroachments off his property." This is unimaginable. Does anyone really believe the school district and I negotiated language about the encroachments when I bought the property, but somehow forgot to include language that the right runs with the land? Of course not. These are recorded documents. My family's been in the real estate business since 1952. I've been a real estate broker for 33 years, and we've got some of the best real estate attorneys in Los Angeles. But let's let the documents speak for themselves. There is no mention of a license in the document. In fact, not only item three of the amendment, which I've already read, but also item nine of the 1988 easement agreement specifically states, "All provisions of this agreement shall also be covenants running with the land and be binding upon and inure to the benefit of all persons having or acquiring any right, title, or interest in all or any portion of the leased land or the undeveloped land and their respective successors and assigns." Furthermore, the 2017 First Amendment specifically affirms that fact. In item six, it states, "Paragraph nine of the easement agreement shall be applicable to each owner of that portion of the adjacent land identified as parcel three, inclusive of each and every future owner of any interest in parcel three and any and all other portions of the adjacent land as subdivided." Sticking with condition A4, this project is not only defective as to easements and encroachments, but it is also defective as to omissions. A supplemental to the staff report was handed out the night of the Planning Commission meeting.
Staff will impose special condition A17 as provided in the supplemental staff report. The future sign depicted on the site plan is not a part of this approval. All project signage is subject to future review and approval as defined in the Simi Valley Municipal Code. The condition is being added to clarify that the depiction of the future sign on the project's site plan was not analyzed by staff as signs are normally reviewed at a ministerial level under the provisions of the, the municipal code.
It is misleading in the extreme to call it project signage. In fact, this location is about 12 feet above the driveway. My bushes and trees would be obscuring the sign. Furthermore, the sign is oriented towards my property where Loman has no access. It is definitely not something that should be handled on a ministerial level. Loman himself admits the monument is a freeway sign on the last page of his letter to the Planning Commission. In Exhibit Three to the staff report, he says, "You are correct that the monument signage you referred to would be freeway signage." Furthermore, Mike Loman specifically told me numerous times, dating back to the time he first approached the city, that Brian Gabler himself met with him and told him he could have his project as long as it complied with the zoning and general plan. And as long as he gave the city a location for the sign, right here, and pointed on a map. Mike told me multiple times that Brian said it in exactly that way. When Mike told me about this, I didn't realize that location was in my planter. Well, now I know. This is an omission of a condition of approval for the project by the city and was purposely kept from me in the hopes I would not find out. It is a defective omission, and as condition A4 states, "Render's any entitlement null and void." I would conclude by stating, there are forces within the city that want an Auto Center freeway sign, but strong-arming small businessmen like Mike or taking away my rights is not the way to get it done. The city council can put an end to this half-baked idea to get the freeway sign location for free by stealing my property rights. Please vote to let Mike move forward with his project without disturbing my encroachments in the easement and getting rid of the freeway sign in my planter.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to open the hearing for the applicant and anyone in the city council chambers wishing to be heard on this matter. Does the applicant for the project wish to be heard on this matter?
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Mike.
And I'm Brian.
Let me just tell you a little bit about me first, so you guys, I've been a resident of Simi Valley community for over 53 years. Last 20 years, I've been conducting business in the city of Simi Valley. My business is manufacturing, leasing, of dry and cold storage, as well as some mobile battery energy storage units. We currently are operating out of four different locations around the city of Simi Valley. I purchased that property with the interest to, to combine it all. We currently employ about 10 Simi Valley residents. With the completion of that building, we're probably going to be upwards of 18 to 20 employees. So it's, it's, that, that is the reason why I purchased the property. I did meet with, initially with Brian Gabler in the beginning. He had mentioned a sign, but we're not doing the sign. It wasn't approved. We, we, it was, it should be not even talked about tonight. Okay, it's not going to happen. The, is, in regards to the, the easement, we, we have a different opinion of, of the language in that, and I know that has nothing to do with the city council, and we do, we understand it is something that's, that would have to be taken in a superior court, at least to interpret the language. But when we submitted to Planning Commission for our project, we've met all of the guidelines, we've, we've done everything. The, the easement will not be, it will be improved. You know, the roads will be improved, the parking will be improved. It's, everything will be exactly, you know, the way it is, you know, I think.
Let me explain a little bit. One, like Mike, Mike said, a while back, the sign was not going to be part of the project. So that, that's out of the project. Second thing is, when we do a site plan, we have to follow all the grading and drainage requirements of an entire site. So there's a, a water loop on the site, there's the drainage that goes down to the street because this site goes downhill. All that had to be developed by our civil engineer, including this part of the site, which was a reciprocal, reciprocal easement. It's not an easement for one, it's easement for both. It's reciprocal. What's happening is, it's kind of a win-win for the adjacent landowner. It's getting done correctly from a grading and drainage point of view. The parking, the paving, the parking will be done to code. The landscape is done to city planning requirements. Everything was developed to city planning requirements. We don't get to just bring a project in and make it happen, say, we're going to do what we feel like doing. Everything was following the rules. If you look at the grading and drainage plan that was submitted, the easement says reciprocal on the plans. Those are legal documents. And Mike isn't taking anything away. We're just making sure that that area of the project is done correctly, as prescribed by your Public Works Department, for the, for the grading and drainage, and for the architecture, and for the landscape. That's all. He still has access, still can use the parking, still has access to his site. If you look at the configuration, it's essentially very similar. It's just we're doing it to code. We're doing it to the planning department requirements. That's all. And there's not going to be a sign in there. So I don't know where the damage is that we're doing. We're only making it better. It's an improvement, and it is not a degradation of the area, and it doesn't take anything away from the adjacent owner. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jeff Nurdin. I'm legal counsel for Mike Loman. I'm the one represented by the Jack the Ripper illustration in the movie. I just want to try to stand and clarify some of the legal issues here, because the, the issue here is that despite all of the conspiracy theories and the personal vendettas and the issues that, that the appellant is, is bringing into the case, that's not what it's about at all. It's a simple matter of property law. And the appellant's dispute in the first place and his entire argument is based on a fundamental misunderstanding of California property law. He has an easement on this property for ingress and egress, which means he can, has the ability to drive across the property to access and, and exit his property. We, any rights beyond that, we, we dispute. We don't, we dispute the fact that he even has any rights under the easement to park on the property. We've allowed him to park on the property, but he doesn't, the easement doesn't establish any rights for him to park on the property. We talk about maintaining the encroachments. The very word encroachment means it's something that is on the property that isn't, that doesn't belong to the owner of the property and is being allowed there. It's being allowed to encroach on property that isn't owned by the person who put it there. So yeah, he has the opportunity to maintain that, to keep the sprinkler systems up, to, you know, maintain the landscaping and keep it in good order. But that doesn't mean he, he has any property rights in those encroachments. Nothing in the documents give him property rights in the encroachments. There is, there's a fundamental disagreement here with regard to who has what legal rights in this property. There were some statements that were said, and I know very few people here are attorneys, and I envy you for not having to worry about this other stuff, but the wording is important. This is not shared ownership of this, of this property. Mike owns the property. He is the fee title ownership of it, owner of it. The appellant has an easement, which allows him to drive on, across the property to access his property, him, but he doesn't, he's not co-ownership of this property at all. The appellant believes that he has certain ownership rights and certain property rights in this easement into improvements on the, on the property that we've entirely disagree with. And that would be a really difficult challenge for the city council, given that this is not a legal venue, you're not judges, I don't know how many of you are attorneys or not or have legal training, but that would be a very difficult challenge to put before a city council to solve these very complicated real estate property issues. Well, fortunately, you don't have to, because since before the United States was formed, there is a legal process called a quiet title action, where someone in the appellant's position can go to the court and say, hey, I believe I have rights in this real property, and the other people believe I have different rights. There's a dispute, right? Well, California Code of Civil Procedure, Section 260 to 265, provides for a quiet title action. The appellant can simply go to the court and say, hey, I believe I have real property rights here. Mike believes he has real property rights that are in conflict. Please resolve this for us. It's the entire purpose of a quiet title action. And then it is addressed by the Superior Court, the county ventura. The appellant will have an opportunity, if they don't agree with the decision made, to appeal it through the court process. There's a process to resolve all of this. But none of that process involves the City Council of Simi Valley. It doesn't involve the Planning Commission or the Planning Department. It's simply not the jurisdiction, or the authority, or the role of the people in this room. We don't want any property rights beyond what Mike is entitled to. We simply want a court, if there's a dispute, to clarify it, and we're happy to go along with it. As Mike said, we didn't set out at the beginning of this to undermine anyone's property rights or to join some cabal that's trying to get a really glaring pinks freeway sign up in the middle of the night. That was not the agenda. The agenda here is to build a productive industrial property there to bring business to Simi Valley and help Mike grow his business, which he has always grown here. So that's the thing that I just wanted to clarify. I don't know if I need time for questions. I really don't need a lot more time to try to make my arguments, but I'm happy to answer questions, because there were a number of kind of misrepresented and misunderstood things in that early conversation with regard to who owns the property. Mike owns the property. Mike is the only owner of this property. The appellant does not own the easement, the easement area. Mike owns the easement area. The easement is an ingress-egress easement. And some of the other language has been interpreted oddly and has been tried to use to say he has certain other rights, but it's fundamentally an ingress-egress easement, which means he can drive on it. Beyond that, any of the other issues that need to be resolved are a matter for the court. Thank you.
I'd just like to conclude that, you know, currently, I'm actually one of Doug's tenants now, right? So I'd be his next-door neighbor. You know, I'm trying to work with him as much as I can. It's just, we just have this thing between us. And like I said, the sign should never be mentioned. It's never going to happen. It's not going to be the easement, so it's a wasted time talking about it. As far as the easement goes, I mean, we're improving the easement. He's not losing any parking spaces. He's not losing any... Well, I'm not saying he can't do anything. So I sometimes wonder, had we went to a litigation over this, like, what would the damages be? You know, what would the damages be? You didn't lose any parking spaces. You didn't lose the opportunity to drive up and down, park. You know, I mean, if anything, we're going to take an undeveloped property, we're going to improve it. It's going to make, you know, him look... It's going to create value for everybody around there, right? Instead of having potential homeless camps up there, which there sometimes is, we're going to improve it. And I think everybody's going to benefit. I think the city, the community's going to benefit, the city, the owners of the surrounding area, parcel A, B, C, parcel 1. I think it's, you know, I think it's a benefit. I don't see any damages. I don't see anything wrong with what we're doing. Yeah, so, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Any questions?
Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this?
Madam Mayor, we do have one speaker card.
Thank you.
Oh, that was Jeff. Nope, no speaker cards.
Okay, thank you. Does staff desire to respond to any of the comments or issues raised?
Staff has no comments, but will respond to any questions.
All right, thank you. Does the applicant desire any... Well, we didn't have any comments, so there's... Does the applicant desire any rebuttal? I said applicant, I meant appellant. Thank you.
I understood. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Pooja Nair of the law firm Irvin Cohen &amp; Jessup in Beverly Hills. And as we're going over the rebuttal points, I do want to incorporate by reference the appeal itself and the reply brief and declaration that were filed and should be available in this matter, because some of the arguments that are in the writings, I just want to make sure that that's part of this record. I wanted to address a few of the legal points here. One is, I think fundamentally, the role of the City Council in these proceedings. As acknowledged in the staff report, the City Council, in considering an appeal, has a quasi-judicial role. And the question, the fundamental question here, is not the City Council's interpretation of the easement language and the First Amendment, but whether the Planning Commission's finding of Condition A4 was supported. Given the clear language here of the 1988 easement, which is a roadway easement, not just access and egress, the roadway easement functions to give the applicant... I'm sorry, to give the appellant the right to build a roadway throughout the entire access easement. It's not a simple ingress and egress. The reason for that, for the wording in the easement is that this was on undeveloped land, and the applicant, the appellant, has the right to build a roadway anywhere across the access easement. And there's case law that cited in the appeal that with a roadway easement, you're not limited to the current configuration. So the owner of the dominant, the owner of the dominant tenement in the easement, which is the appellant, has that right to build the roadway at any time throughout the access easement. They can use it however best suits their property. And I think that the First Amendment, which was cited in the video and I think is pretty clear, the language there specifically protects the rights of parking and landscaping as they existed in 2017. Both the 1988 easement and the 2017 easement amendment are recorded documents that protect the appellant's property rights. And the issue here is that in order for the idea that the burden would be on my client to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars in a lawsuit that could last, you know, given... it could last months, years, to determine his property rights, rather than there being some burden on the Planning Commission and on the city at a local level to consider in approving the A4 finding whether or not there is an issue here with the easement in recorded documents. And so, is it fair, is it consistent with California property rights acknowledged in the staff report, that an appellant would need to affirmatively go to the court system when essentially the Planning Commission, through the issuance of the CUP, is finding, making a finding of easement and encroachment and omissions in that condition? And the relief here that the applicant is seeking, that the appellant is seeking, I'm sorry, is not to shut down this project. It is to reconfigure the project just to avoid that access easement. As you can see, the access easement is relatively small in regard to the rest of the property, and so that's specifically what we're asking for. Like, I don't know if you have anything. And if you have any questions, I'm available.
Cool.
So there's a few things. One is, I realize it's a reciprocal easement. He gets to be there, I get to be there. I've got some other rights in there. I think Nurdin talking about that I don't have any property rights. I mean, I do have property rights in there, and they're more than just that I have some sort of access to my property. That's, you know, if you look at the documents, they're in the attachment. They're like super thick. They've got a lot of stuff in there besides just you get access to your property. So also, I want to tune you into something that she was just talking about, and that is, the way this was done was so nasty by this Planning Commission not, or by staff not throwing up their hands and saying, "Hey, there's a disagreement about who owns this property. You guys need to figure it out and then come to us." If that had been the case, Mike would have been in a position of having to sue me, and then I'd just have to go to my title company, Title Insurance, and say, "Hey, defend me." But the way it is now, I've got to come up with, it's going to be like 300 or 400 grand to go to court on this, and it really stinks. And parking is removed. If you count the parking spots, they've been removed. There's a finger planter added, and there are EV chargers added, and there's handicap spots added, and eliminated parking spots. And it does remove my landscaping. And utilities, I don't have a problem. He's got it, he gets to tie into utilities under the ground. That's not an issue at all. And he knows, they know that it's not an issue. It's reciprocal. And then if the sign, you know, if the sign never had anything to do with it, are you kidding me? What's the sign doing there, then? And what's it doing, like oriented towards my property, where he can't even drive? And why is it up like 12 feet above where you'd be looking? I mean, if you put, if it was monument signage for his property, you'd put it over by his building, right? Where people are driving up to it. And this is probably the final thing, that's like the most important. It's not your option if you guys make a decision on the easement, it's your obligation. With A4, you guys are the ones that... You can't issue any entitlements if there's defects as to easements and encroachments or these omissions. You just can't issue them. And so, you know, I don't know, is it going to be... It's probably not going to be going to court with Mike. It's probably going to be going to court with the city if this is approved, because you guys aren't allowed to make, to give entitlements on property where there's a defect as to easements and encroachments or omissions.
Thank you. Does the applicant for the project desire any rebuttal?
Yes, thank you. Everything that was just brought up, I think, highlights the fact that this is not the forum in which this needs to be decided. We're talking about, you know, Ms. Nair talked about different interpretations of easement law and whether or not roadway easement requires, allows for a road anywhere on the property. And I've done the research, and as always, attorneys, I can come up with an equally compelling argument the other direction. We can both, you know, cite precedent and case law and statutes and details that would be very appropriate in front of a court of law. But that's not the forum here. The issue, the issue here is, we have documents, recorded property, real estate documents, that establish the rights of each party in the easement. And simply because somebody doesn't understand those, and doesn't understand the law, and comes up with an alternative interpretation or an alternative view, and tries to impose that on the city, doesn't mean that the matter isn't clear. The City Council rightly looked at this. They saw that Mike has the fee title ownership of the property, including the area that's covered by the easement, and they included it all in the project. That's the way they're doing their job, the way it's supposed to be done. In the last, when it was appealed, they went through the property. The city attorney did his job, too. He did exactly what he's supposed to do. He informed the department of what the scope of their review is, what the scope of the authority is, what's properly reviewed by a court, and they acted accordingly. There's this idea that some group of people within and without the city and different departments, and Mike maybe included or maybe not, have this agenda or these issues or these plans going on, but that's simply not supported by the facts. If you look at every employee and every civil servant within the city of Simi Valley, from the Planning Department up to this meeting, everyone's simply doing their jobs, within the scope of their authority, deferring what is their authority to the courts properly, and going about doing what should be done in the proper way that it should be done. I don't want to stand here and try to make a bunch of complicated legal arguments. Quite frankly, I'm not a litigator. This is one of very few times I even appear in these types of meetings. I'm a contract person. I negotiate contracts. We offered two different settlement agreements to the appellant to try to just make this go away and said, "Look, if we just agree on this and this, we don't even have to go to the City Council." We tried to come to a settlement agreement before the appeal to the Planning Department. That's what I typically do. I just try to look at the situation, find a workable solution, present it in the clearest way I possibly can, and get two parties in good faith to agree on it. That hasn't been possible. We've done our best. And so, in a situation like this, where there's an intractable problem involving complicated real estate issues and legal issues, the Civil Procedure says that's a matter for the Superior Court. And we're happy, if we have to, to go there and try to participate in that mediation process and everything we can to resolve that as quickly and painlessly as possible, so that these two business owners can operate in a friendly manner, in a very peaceful way on the property with a clear legally defined relationship between them. That's what we need here. Not a bureaucratic hassle that some people are trying to drag you into. We just need a clear legal answer. As soon as we have that, all the disagreements go away. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Are there any further comments or questions from City Council members that are going to be from staff, the applicant, or the appellant? Okay, because I don't want to close the hearing until those are asked. All right, thank you. Well, Councilmember Rhodes is already on.
Oh, I'm sorry. Good. Please, go first. I thought, I thought...
He beat you to the punch.
Please, I'm glad.
Councilmember Rhodes.
So I'm moved by both sides of the argument of what is the responsibility of City Council. And in the end, I'm going to rely on our council to guide us as to what is our appropriate responses. But, and I guess maybe, I'll start with the last question that I just wrote down for our city attorney, and perhaps the applicant's attorney would know this as well. If they go into a court proceeding to determine the actual easement rights issue outside of us, because we don't have anything to do with it, is there any type of stay? Is there a restriction that they cannot start development until that question is resolved?
Either of the parties, if they decide to go to court, can request a stay while the court considers what to do with their respective sides. An injunction could have been filed to stop essentially a lot of this from moving forward. So there are remedies to preclude any movement on development until that's resolved.
Okay. And that gets me to my overall thought, which is, going to court, there's no winners on this. There's going to be a decision one way or another, but there's going to be tons of money spent in that process. So I'm encouraged that there were at least, I don't know what the offers were of settlement, but I'm encouraged that there was at least an attempt at settlement, and I would encourage that that continue. Question to staff. Can we, as part of that conditional use permit that's in front of us, have any language about the parking spaces that are going to be returned to the appellant's side, the east side, and say that they must be returned to exactly what was taken out? So I'm assuming they need to rip them up to get attachment to utilities, that they must be replaced exactly as found. Is that something that we can put in? Don't change the landscaping, don't change the EV charging, leave it as it was?
I'm going to look at the city attorney first to see, before I respond.
Yeah, I mean, you can respond. I go back to, if you look at Page 14 of what's being requested by the appellant, it is that the City Council, you know, they have options. Approve the CUP application with the condition that no construction of any kind take place, and no alterations are permitted to the encroachments, or essentially refer it back to the Planning Commission to make sure that it doesn't impede on the appellant's property rights, right? So I think if we're, if your question is generally, can we impose another condition? I think what you're asking is, can we create a special condition? Because that would be a special condition. There has to be a nexus, obviously, and there has to be findings that are made with respect to that. My concern is that whenever we're weighing in on those specific things, is that we're taking a position as to what the party's rights are.
And that's what I was afraid of.
Can I respond directly to Councilmember Rhodes? I just want to clarify that I don't believe that currently there is an EV station or a handicap spot there. Is that correct?
Correct.
So it wouldn't be, to your point, if... So, he, it wouldn't be, to your point, if it was not changing it at all?
Right.
They're, right, so.
You have to put it on the other side.
Right, no, that's the point that I'm making. I mean, I, I would look at that as going, it's an improvement, it's an advantage to have that additional stuff. But if that's impeding progress, if we put a stipulation of like, eh, well, okay, sorry, we're trying to do a, a good thing over there. You're just going to have to put the EV station and the landscaping on the other side and restore that parking strip to where it was. I think that that would be cutting off your nose despite your face from one of the parties. But, yeah, if, if it got it done without having to go through all of the land use process, but to the attorney's point, as soon as we do that, we are now weighing in on who we think has rights, certain rights and that sort of thing. And now we are playing judge on that, and, and that's a sticky spot. So, I, I guess in, in my line of questioning, it would be, gee, I would hope that there is a... Also, a staff question, sign, that is not any part of this CUP that we are approving? Or did I misread?
There is no sign as far, as part of the CUP.
Right, so that would have to be a completely separate thing that would have to come back before us? Or administrarily to planning?
So, some signs are ministerial. Okay.
Right, and that, that's where I was going to go. Can we just put in here that any sign, especially something that resembles a freeway sign, need to come to council?
And just, just to follow up on some of the statement, the, the sign depiction on the plan was discovered late in the process, as the appellant stated. And we knew of the auto dealer sign, we'll call it that, versus the freeway sign, which could just be advertising the property itself, so we don't know what a freeway sign was. Either way, we, to expedite things, we took it off the plan and to eliminate that concern that was raised. And obviously, there's no application for a freeway sign or auto dealership sign on the CUP.
All right, so there's nothing real or implied or hidden in, in, you know, a backroom deal that says we're going to put that, they're going to put that sign up for us?
That's correct.
Right, so, can, can we, for this project or for a signage of this property, have the, the signage request come back to us instead of being ministerial? So that we have an open and, and, and clear conversation about that signage?
Some of those signs also in the easement. So, adding an additional condition may imply certain things. So, signage, again, signage is a ministerial approval in our procedures. A auto dealer sign, if that's what we want to call, is not a ministerial process to begin with. So, that would come back to.
It's already in, baked in our code, is it?
It's well beyond regular sign code allowances. So, that'd come back to probably the city council if it ever came about. So, that's well beyond this type of application.
All right, so, knowing that, I would, I would seriously encourage both parties to take a look at that strip of land and look at your pocketbooks and look at the time requirements to go through this and see if there's another bite of the apple that can be taken. There's no sign, so that's not going to happen. The, 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 the plans or the building has to be built to the plans that are, would be approved. And they cannot be built until there's a decision on this. So, sooner rather than later is probably a good idea. But I, I, I'm in agreement with counsel. It's not, based on the, the arguments of the appellant's counsel, I, I don't see that as, I don't, I think that we should not be making a finding on this. That is not our role.
Thank you. Councilmember Littler.
I would like to ask Mr. Feldbinger, Feldbinger, I've got to get it right. I'll get it right by the end of this conversation, Feldbinger. I want to understand, you showed, and I'm trying to find it in the report, staff report, I'm not finding it. You showed an excerpt from, from code, CUP language, from our code, which basically says that easement is part of that CUP process. Can you cite that again?
Yeah, it's in the staff report.
Can you, can you tell me where it is? Because I.
It's condition A4, so it's environmental services code, I mean, condition.
Can someone, does someone know where the page is? I just want to reread that again carefully, and I thought.
Do you have it right there, Sean?
Page 101? Okay, so, page 101. And it's specific, and it was A4?
Yes.
Anything which is not shown on the application plans or which is not specifically approved or which is not in compliance with CUP is not approved. Any application and/or plans which are defective as to, without limitation, omission, dimensions, scale, use, colors, materials, encroachments, easements, renders any entitlement null and void. I guess I, my, just, okay, thank, thank you for bringing that to my attention. My concern is that this suggests that that should be part of the CUP process, this discussion of easements. At least that's how I read this, that it is not inappropriate to have this discussion. Although ideally, it should have been resolved before it came, is what I believe. That's, at least that's how I am reading this. And so, I do think it's appropriate that we have a conversation. I'm not saying we should be the judge and jury necessarily, but I think this suggests it's appropriate that it should have been addressed at the planning commission level and here.
If I can chime in, Councilmember Littler. The, one of the requirements that staff has mentioned is that the, any kind of easement be shown on the plans that the property owner has legal right to. And so, this is indicating that if that is not included, then that would be a defect, is how I'm reading that. So, it was included in the plans that were submitted. I don't know if the city attorney has a different interpretation of that.
No, I, I would agree with that. And, and I would go even further and say, to the extent that there is an interpretation that if there is, for instance, a defective easement or defect with respect to a property modification on the easement, that it renders any, it essentially makes the, the CUP void, it ultimately requires then an interpretation of the easement, which is not one of the things that is in purview because there's a legal determination, if that makes any sense. But what I, I think is the more appropriate interpretation of this is that anything which the, the applicant submits, which is on that lot, has to be included to essentially staff. And if it's not included, that makes their submission defective. So, they were required to include the easement on the, the plans as part of this process.
And if the court's found in favor of the appellant, then the CUP would be?
That's right, the CUP would be void.
Would be void.
And, and there's the.
This is who makes the decision.
That's the answer to the question, right? I mean, we're not, I, I, I don't think that there's anything in, in at least the city's documents or records to say if a court of competent jurisdiction makes a decision that the applicant, the appellant's position is accurate, that the city is going to take the position that we're going to ignore the court and still allow the, you know, applicant to move forward, absolutely not. We, we would stop it at that point, it's just that that doesn't exist. And so, it's clear, at least to me, from, from the record that what's, what's being requested is an interpretation. And again, I think that there's a danger associated with that. I'll also point out that, to be clear, if this goes to court, and, and I know that the, the appellant suggested, well, he would bring the city in. Well, luckily for us, the city is defended and indemnified by the applicant as part of the process. And so, yeah, the city may get brought into that. But it's, it, it wouldn't be our economic sort of risk that, that are sort of put out there if they decided to go that route.
Councilmember Littler, are you done?
You can go somewhere else, but I'm going to come back. I'd like, I'm not done actually, I'm done on this, somewhere else have a question?
I have, I have other councilmembers waiting.
Yeah, go ahead and have them speak, and then I'd love to come back.
Okay, Mayor Protem Jedge.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On, when this project first came out, I remember our appellant coming forward early on in the process to let the city know there was a problem with this. Is there any, I mean, is there any kind of mechanism when a plan comes forward like this and there is a challenge like that? Couldn't we have, basically, couldn't we have stopped this then? By saying, you come back to us after you figure this all out in court? I'm addressing this question to the city attorney. Because I think that's what should have happened, before we get dragged in, drug into this like we're being now.
And I'm going to give you the attorney answer, which is yes and no. I'm, I'm going to say yes to the extent that you always want to try to have the parties work it out before it gets to the planning commission or city council. Just makes it a lot easier in the long run. And I would say no to the extent that when a project is presented to the planning commission or council, you're looking at specific things. So, you're looking at what conditions are required by the city? And are there adequate findings that are made to essentially allow issuance of the CUP? And so, if we took a position that we're simply going to prevent the applicant from submitting projects that would seem to comply with what, what our rules are, then all of a sudden, we've got a problem with, with the applicant, an express problem as opposed to a hypothetical one.
Oh, okay. I guess that's it from you.
Councilmember Ayala.
I think that, to Councilmember Jedge's point, we should be thinking of how we're not in this situation again from a process, just a simple process perspective. The other thing I would say is that in regards to A4, I think it's important that we reiterate and let the public know that the city did not improperly involve itself by requiring the inclusion of the easement, but that the city's conditional use permit policy requires that all existing easements on the site and within 100 feet of the property be included in the project's scope, and that's why it was included. I also found it interesting that both parties agreed that it, it is a reciprocal easement. And both of them acknowledged that. And so, the easement rights, as we know, it's a civil matter. It's not only outside the scope of the approval of the conditional use permit, but I think that there's courts that handle such matters with much more expertise than we have up here. I also just want to comment on the video where the, there was, Mr. Berger was on the, the video. And the comment made was that he felt someone was, was shutting people up. And I just think that he was clarifying what the scope of the responsibilities of the commission was. Similar how we rely on our city attorney to tell us what our scope of responsibilities are during meetings and to clarify what our responsibilities are. So, I just want to mention that as well. So, while I, I'll just mention two more things. While I care about the situation and have my own viewpoint of what should happen, it's not my responsibility as a council member to make that decision. And I will finally say that I don't know either person in this party. I've never met either gentleman, they probably have never even seen me before. But you are, I'm just going to say, you are neighbors, you're going to be neighbors, and you're adults, and I think that you can figure it out and figure out a way to do it, because you guys are kind of stuck with each other. And beyond any legal thing that goes on, I think there's a way that you can figure out to be cordial and nice to each other and work it all out.
Councilmember Littler, did you have any?
I do, thank you. Appreciate everyone's comments on this. It's interesting, I, I read through the appellant's brief carefully. Had a strong opinion after reading it. I drove to the site and looked carefully, walked it and took pictures of it to try to understand exactly where the line is, what, what's the, you know, what, what the issue was. My opinion changed slightly after I saw it. And then I've come back to this evening and I've, I've just, I've gone back and forth because I understand that theoretically, well, I understand, I'm hearing our legal advice, that it is not within our purview, but I'm, I'm not convinced. Because my reading of that is that accurate easement reporting, which includes its usage, is part of their responsibility. So, it, again, it's how you, that's where attorneys look at something. It depends on how they read it and see it, et cetera. So, so I guess my question becomes, in this easement discussion, if the current applicant who's building this lovely facility that's going, that will improve that property, in fact, I will tell you that right now is a wild, overgrown hill. It will absolutely, I want to be very clear, it's absolutely going to improve that property. There's no question that it will. But my, my, I guess my question becomes, as for this, and this is maybe more a question for Sean. Can, if, if Mr. Feldbinger really loves the way his parking is affixed right now and the way, is there anything stopping the applicant from putting the electrical charging on the other side? Putting the handicap on the other side so that it doesn't change what he likes and is used to? Is there something the city has said that makes that impossible?
Again, we reviewed the design that was submitted. So, if he relocated.
So, it's nothing the city, it's nothing the city's requiring at all? Or thinks, it's just a choice of the other applicant that that's where they want the electrical, that's where they want the charging station to go, that's where they, I want to be very clear with this.
Yeah, if the applicant chose a different location, we would review the different location.
And the city had no influence whatsoever on the, on the signing of, of that?
No.
I guess, I guess my, and, and then it goes back to my initial question too, which was primary easement versus, or whatever those terms were, I'll go back to, that were used. Who has, you know, which, who's, who's easement rights trump whose rights? And, and I understand supposedly one party, anyway. The way, when my reading of it suggests that Mr. Feldbinger's, his rights are as strong, that's just my reading of it, as, and I think it's unfortunate that he can't continue to use that easement the way he has it configured, particularly since what's being proposed is very similar. Am I inaccurate? It's just that they're undergrounding things and they're putting, as I looked at the, is it, is it really that much different? What, what is the difference? How many slots is he using, losing?
Thank you for the question. They're losing two spaces and an addition of a landscape planner to the project.
So, he, so he loses his landscaping, which matches everything all the way down. So, it changes the appearance. I only, only know that because I drove it, looked at it, I was kind of curious. So, he loses his landscaping that matches everything, the rest of his buildings, and he loses two parking spaces.
Correct.
And.
And he gains potentially handicapped space and a charger.
Yes. But he, he gains a handicap, potentially handicaps his charger if, if he wanted them. But he doesn't need, okay, okay. I, I guess, okay, thank you for that clarification. I just want you to know that the way I'm hearing it and reading it right now is that I just, I probably think that we should, that we do have a responsibility that this easement is accurately, is, is, is in a way that parties are happy and can go forward. And I think that should have been part of it. So, I, that's where I'm standing at the moment. I'm not sure I'm voting, but that's just how I'm feeling. And so, I guess I don't know if we can make a motion that allows, which is what, what Councilmember Rhodes initially said, was, you know, can we just say, can you just make it so his side feels comfortable the way he has it now? But, but what I'm hearing, if I may mistaken, is if we do that or say that, we are going beyond our, in the attorney's feeling, we're going beyond our rights or.
Well, to be clear, what I said is you could, you could do, you can impose a special condition if you make the findings required to impose. That's, that's what you're asking. Can we impose a special condition? Well, if you can impose that, you, you absolutely got to make sure that it's relevant to the plan. And, and my concern is if, if you make a statement that the, the applicant who's saying that we have these, you know, the, the rights or we believe that, that it is, and then the.
these, you know, the rights, or we believe that it is, and then the appellant is taking a separate position, but what we're focusing on are the conditions required by the city and the findings, but we're going beyond that now to talk about who has what rights and returning it back to normal, you are absolutely weighing in on the dispute between the parties. And I can't tell the council not to do that, I can only tell you, to caution you against that. And so-
Okay, fair enough. I really want to ask the applicant if they care that much about those two parking spaces, but, actually, not the, not the appellant, but the actual, but, but I don't know whether it's appropriate to ask that, I just-
We have not closed the hearing, so you can.
So I'm just, it's just a curiosity, if they would be willing to just return to the way it is? I understand that we may or may not have that right to even influence or make that choice. I'm just, it's a curiosity.
The applicant doesn't necessarily have a strong opinion on where parking goes and where, where the electrical vehicle charging station and each of these items go. Our issue with the finding along that line is consistent with what the city attorney is saying. We believe that as the fee owner of that property, we have the right to make the decisions about how that property is used, so long as we don't violate the appellate easement rights. So we would object to any, any condition or any statement that the city council put in place that implied the appellant has more of a legal, more legal real property rights in the easement than he actually has. We would prefer that be resolved by a court through the proper mechanisms. Not because we have a strong opinion on where parking or electrical vehicles or handicap spots go, but simply because real property rights have value. And what happens in the future with each of these parcels, clarity is going to be more important than the location of any particular tree, bush, or parking spot.
I'm hearing you, but once it's in, you're not going to be doing much more, actually, I guess I'm trying to get you out of a job, so I realize that. But, no, I mean, don't get me wrong, but I'm just saying if they say, "Yeah, no problem", then we're all good, and we can go ahead and say, just go forward with the CUP the way it is, knowing that he's going to just return it, and then, and that, I realize, gets you out of a job. And I'm, and that's not what I'm trying to do is-
I would love to not be needed in this.
Okay.
Anyway, that, that-
Okay, I understand you. Thank you.
If somebody would like to ask you a question?
Do you want to respond to what I was just talking?
Well, actually, what has been mentioned a couple of times, and that is that we should resolve this, and-
Come on.
I have, I have been in Mike's warehouse and talked to him about this, and if you read the declaration, he, I said, whenever we were at the planning commission meeting last time, and he said, and they asked about, he'd mentioned about the settlement anyhow, he said, you know, we, he thought there was an issue with the landscaping and with the sign, but that he thought that there might be some other issue in play also. And I went in there because he had some stuff out in the parking lot, and I went in to talk to him, and I said, "Hey, Mike, there isn't anything else, man. It's just stay out of the landscaping, get rid of the sign, and we're ready to rock and roll, man. You'll be building your place." And he was like, "Gee, man, thanks for coming in and talking to me." And he's like, "I'm sick," and he still wanted to elbow bump me and all this stuff. It wasn't until the attorneys after that, and he said, you know, "I want to talk to the city," because I told him, "Go on and talk to them, the city's going to be a big waste of time. It's the city council that's the one that's, that's got the power now." And he said, "I feel more comfortable talking to the city first before we move forward." He went and talked to him, and then all of a sudden he doesn't want to do anything, and we're here. So I think there is a way to settle it.
Got it.
Any other comments, questions from the city council? Any comments from staff?
Yeah, Mayor Kavanaugh. Did the applicant want to mention anything about the charging station or the handicap parking?
Yeah, I don't want to make this a big thing. I know we're on overtime tonight here. Doug's right, we went, he came to me, we talked about it. But we've also, you know, the problem with that, the reason why the attorney is involved is because he keeps changing his mind, right? I mean, it's always something. The sign was never part of the deal, but he wanted to make it a part of the deal, right? So we, I talked, you know, talked about that. I told him, you know, "If you want to move the charging station, I'm okay with that. It's not a big deal. If you want to move the handicap, I'm okay with that. Just, I don't have a problem with that, right?" You know, it's just that, you know, he comes to me on the 11th hour. We had a schedule on, on December 18th that we canceled because he came to us an hour before the meeting with all these grievances. So we canceled it. We didn't know, you know, we were not prepared for that. Then we scheduled to January 22nd, we tried to negotiate with him. We talked to the attorney, we said, "Hey, we'll put this in writing." Nope, they didn't want to do that. So we showed up on January 22nd, and it was approved by the city council. In March, that's when Doug came in, we talked about it, the appeal, he mentioned a lot of stuff. I did agree that we would work some stuff out. I did say I was going to talk to the thing. That required me spending more money hours before, or days before the next hearing, right? So, you know, I don't trust that we're going to have some deal, and that's why the attorneys are involved. We said, we brought the attorneys in, said, "Hey, we already tried to negotiate with him. I'm telling you guys, city council, right now, I don't care about the EV chargers. I've got plenty of space on my, I can remove that. On the handicap, fine, we'll do that. You know, we're approving the easement, okay? I believe there is 18 parking spots, and there's 20 now. I've been renting them for the last five years. I've never seen more than four cars up there at any given time, okay? But if he wants the extra two parking spots to make it 20, we'll put two extra parking spots at the back of the easement, make up the 20, right? So that, I don't have a problem with any of that stuff. That can be negotiated, we're good, you know? As far as the landscaping goes, you'll probably bring up the landscaping. You know, I, like I said, I've been at the property for five years. I could tell you that the curbs are disgusting, the landscaping is disgusting. You saw a picture of the landscaping in the back. You drove by there today. And I won't even ask what you thought, okay? It's 1980s, called and said, "Hey, I want my landscaping back." You know, all we're trying to do is upgrade, make it look nice, you know, matching parcel A, parcel, you know, parcel B, he's doing the best he can. He bought it old, and, you know, he hasn't done much, but Giovanni wants to do more, right? We want to improve it all, make it look good. That's all, that's all about. That's all I want to do, is improve easement. He can have his rights, he can park there, I'm not going to disallow that, you know? He goes up and down. There's never more than five cars at any given time over the last five years, you know? So that, that's, that's it. Any questions? Make it clear?
It sounds like you guys are on the same page a lot of the way. Doesn't it? Does to me. All right, any other questions, concerns from the council? All right, this hearing is now closed. I will now entertain a motion.
None of us want to do it, so I'll do it. I move to adopt resolution, a resolution denying the appeal, upholding the planning commission's approval of CUP-s-2023-0011 and the determination that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
I'll second.
The motion passes with Councilmember Lister voting no.
But I am convinced that the two of you want the same good things and can work it out. I just want to be, I really believe that.
I do too. So hopefully that will work it out. Don't let a friendship and a business relationship go away. It's not worth it in this day and age. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item seven, the consent calendar, and there are no resolutions for your consideration this evening.
I'll move consent.
May I have a second?
Second.
Call for the vote. Mayor Kavanaugh? The motion passes unanimously?
We will now have new carpet.
Although I want you to know that Councilmember Rhodes was going to pull that item to discuss it, and he did not live up to his promise.
No, I asked her to put it on consent. Yeah, exactly.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 10A, council member reports. Councilmember Ayala.
Thank you. On March 1st, I attended the Every 15 Minutes program at Royal High School. It's a two-day program, as you know, and as a volunteer with the police department, they always volunteer for this event. So I've done day two quite a few times, but day one I had not been to before, so it was good to see the first part of that. And then later in the day, I was able to visit with our environmental services team, myself, Stratus, is there in the back, and it was great to meet with him and to learn more about our master plan and how all of that fits into the decisions that we are making up here. On March 3rd, April 3rd, thank you, I attended the Neighborhood Council Number One group. They're a very active and vocal group. A couple of them were here today just to stay involved. And on the 5th, I attended the Roundup Music Festival. I volunteered there for three hours, making sure that everyone was legal to have adult beverages. And then later that day, I went to the talent show with our youth council talent show at the cultural arts center, and that was really great, lots of great entertainment. And Mr. Al Brown, he did some magic to kill time while they did all the votes, and so it was good to see him in action. And today, the 7th, I met with our Public Works Department, Mr. Fuchiwaki, and we were able to have a great conversation about what Public Works is all about and what they're doing and some, some projects that they have going on. And then I took Councilmember Lister's advice, last, at our last meeting, you said we should all look at the Enso Verde project, which is that new senior living facility that's being built. So today I did go and meet with them based upon what, so I do listen to you, based upon what you had said, and it is a great project. I actually put you on the waiting list. And so, well, 33, well, 33% is now sold, and so they needed to make sure that they had the interest filled in. So I didn't want you to lose out on the two-bedroom, two-bath place.
Why, thank you. As long as you're paying the deposit, that's lovely of you.
Just so everyone knows, I won't say what it is, but it's a pretty big deposit, so. But it's going to be a great facility up there, and it's a, like you mentioned last week, that the tour, the virtual tour they give you is pretty remarkable in terms of the technology that they use. And so, thank you. That was my week.
Thank you. Councilmember Rhodes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On Tuesday, April 1st, I attended, here at City Hall, the Sober Living and Recovery Home Task Force. I'd asked some questions of staff to get a handle on what sober living homes look like in our city and talk about some legislation things. I appreciated staff for a really comprehensive look at how are we going to discover the scope of what's going on in our city, and then possibly put some legislator, legislation around it. Later that day, I attended a Zoom call with the CEHD, Community Economic Human Development Committee prep meeting for Thursday. Then on Wednesday, April 2nd, I attended, I did not attend day one, but I did attend day two of the Every 15 Minutes program. And I had not, other than videos, I had not seen either day, but I couldn't make it to day one. There were tissue boxes appropriately placed all throughout the seating area, and they were used. Very impactful program. Thank you to everybody that puts that on. It's a ton of volunteer work and funding that goes into making that happen, and if we just stop one, I think it's a project worth doing. That evening had a special honor to do the flag salute at the Parks District Board Meeting. And the reason that I was invited by Chair Abella was because it was also Living Donor Day, and I was there with Tony, and we share a kidney together. And also Jill Abella, Ed's wife, was there. She is a recipient, and I thought it was a really touching tribute that he did. That was a pretty class act, and I was happy to play a small part in that. On Thursday, April 3rd, was a meeting downtown day, and it's at SCAG, I'm involved in three committees, the Executive Committee, the Community Economic and Human Development Committee, and the Regional Council. I was going to report out of the CEHD about our building hardening, but we talked about that earlier in the program, and I've already given some ideas to staff about what's going on in Calabasas that maybe we want to incorporate with our EOC here to start getting education out on home hardening. After that, I attended the Clean Power Alliance Board Meeting, and the thing that I want to make sure the residents know about is that if you already have solar and you think it would be kind of cool to have a battery backup system for your house, they upped the grant or the rebate that they will be giving to, depending on your circumstances, around $2,000 to go towards battery backup system. If you're putting in solar new and want battery backup, well, then you can also apply and use that same $2,000. On Saturday, April 5th, I attended the Roundup Country Music Festival where I was carded by our fellow council members. More importantly, my wife was, and she was flattered, so thank you very much. And so, thank you for the quantas and everyone that puts that on, there's a ton of volunteer hours, including Peter Kruby, who ran around telling people to take their drinks off the dance floor. I left that event early and got to go to the Boys and Girls Club Masquerade Gala that was not at the Reagan Library this year, but at another location out in Camarillo. It was a very successful event, raised lots of money and lots of fun. They are going to endeavor to not schedule it on the same day as Roundup next year. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Judge.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mine's pretty short. I attended the SCAG Regional Council, NEAC, and Transportation Committee on Thursday, April 3rd. Not too much to report back out of that as far as city's concerned. Rocky covered most of it as far as, just Transportation Committee, little note, I was made the chair starting in June. Friday, April 4th, I attended the VC meeting, VCTC meeting up in Camarillo. Again, not too much to report out of that, dealing with Simi Valley in particular, we're still on balanced budget, went forward, it was approved. VCTC's doing well, the projects, if we have any, just hit me up, I'll make sure we push those through, get them done also with SCAG, because now we have a lot of East County, or a lot of Antigua County representation on SCAG boards. So if we have projects that need to get through and you need SCAG money for, you've got two people sitting right here that can push, and we know another. So that's the end of my report. Oh, Friday, or Saturday, April 5th, I too attended the Roundup Country Music Festival and was honored to get up on stage by Justin Honsinger when he celebrated our troops and first responders. That's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Judge. The Royal High Every 15 Minutes program, that is so impactful. My daughter was one of the students the first year they did that, and so I was one of the parents that got notified, and yes, it's very, very emotional. Yeah, day one, I knew it wasn't-
Yeah, day one, I knew it wasn't real, it still shook you up, shook up my entire office staff. They were all like, and we knew it was going to happen. But like you said, if it saves one life and, and they make the, one person makes the right choice, it's all worth it. Thank you to the PTSA, they, they do the majority of that, as well as all the, you know, first responders. The PD helps in the hospital and fire, and even the mortuary usually is involved in all that. And then I love the fact that the students now are filming those, and they do a great job in doing the, the whole event. The first year, when my daughter did, you kind of got a couple scenes here, a couple scenes there, it wasn't as well produced. Nowadays, they do a fantastic job. So kudos to them too. And kudos and thanks to all the businesses that donate money, as well as the Police Foundation supports that too. So thank you. Wednesday, April 2nd, I had ED's Economic Development Collaborative Executive Board. Mostly just general stuff that we were going around, except we had a very interesting conversation over tariffs with the CEO of the port, Kristin DeKes. Kristin is extremely knowledgeable and extremely well and great at what she does. So it was a nice conversation to kind of see what her thoughts were in regards to the different tariffs. Forty-eight, it's either 43 or 48% of their annual income is from automobiles importing. So they're curious as to how that's going to affect them. Friday, April 4th, I also went to the Simi Valley Royal softball game. I was at the earlier game, so I must have missed you there. I saw you posted a picture. I'm not going to say who won the JV game. It must have been Simi, Mike. I don't know who won the varsity game. Oh, okay, Royal won varsity, JV, Simi won. Everyone gets something. There you go, everyone gets an award. On Saturday, I also attended the Roundup Music Festival. A lot of fun, quanas, thank you. You do a great job bringing that to our, our community, and a lot of people had a great time. Justin and his band is always a, a lot of fun. So it was nice to see Mike up there honored as both a former LAPD and a Army, go Army, right? So unfortunately, I had bought tickets for the talent show, but I was at the Roundup a little late, and my five-year-old date crashed. So he, we didn't make it to the talent show, but I did support it at least by buying some tickets. I was really looking forward to that. And that's the end of my report for today.
Council reports seemed a little shorter tonight, Mayor.
Sorry, City Manager Arquay just reminded me, did I?
Move to adjourn.
Councilmember Litzler, we were going to get out of here on time.
I did put myself in the queue. I pushed the button, hoping that maybe you'd see that. I wasn't, I figured it's because I was the one no vote on that last thing, that was like, okay, she's out of here.
I just thought, you know, I was ready for Mike to hear what Mike had to say. All right. Councilmember Litzler.
That's right. I will try to be brief as everyone wants to leave, but, but I would like to share just a few things. Actually, I will tell you that over the whole week, there were several times the Simi Valley Education Foundation presented Lou Roth Award recipients. I can't tell you where we went, I can't tell you who got them because they haven't been made public. But just know that as of after tomorrow, they'll be made public, and everyone needs to come and support on Monday in two weeks from, actually, two weeks from tonight is the, it'll be the, whatever that date is, is where Lou Roth Awards will be at the, at the Strathern. But anyway, so put that on your calendar. But anyway, quickly, Tuesday, April 1st, I did stop into the youth council meeting. They were just humming as they were trying to do their rehearsals, et cetera, in preparation, and, and really all were involved, it was all hands on deck. And thank you to the Simi Valley Cultural Arts Center for making that possible. I just want to quickly, my perspective of the Every 15 Minute Program, I did not go to the car crash this time. I've done that before, and it's, it's moving. I did go to the wonderful presentation where they, the living dead come in and speak. And I will say, I was fine until I saw one sweet little boy, excuse, I shouldn't say little, a sweet young, or give, a rose to his mother and saw, saw the tears streaming down her face and realized it was very real to them, very, very real. And that's when I lost it. But I want to say thank you to Liz Hernandez, who was the one, actually, who put that together in short shrift because she wasn't initially charged with that, but when someone who was passed away, bless, anyway, she stepped up and made it happen. And so thank you to Liz for making that possible. Thursday, April 3rd, I wanted to quickly discuss what I learned in my SCAG Regional Council Energy and Environment Committee, only because I found a few things kind of concerning but interesting, and that maybe we should be aware of. One of the things they talked about was that the safety elements must now be updated when housing plans are updated. We are doing that, we've done that. Ventura County is 100% compliant, but some of the other counties are not, like Imperial County, I think, was 30%. But one of the questions that came out of that discussion was one person asked about notification of disabled people in their safety element and whether or not we actually have something in place, if there's an emergency, to notify those who cannot get out of their homes or, and so I'd love, love us to think about how we can integrate that into our plan. The other thing that came out of that meeting was the South Coast AQMD gave a, gave a, a report about their proposed rules 1111 and 1121. What's interesting is we are not part of AQMD. There are five counties in SCAG. The other four counties are, we are not in that district. But basically, they are, they are implementing rules that will make it a mandatory that all, that all homes be basically 100% electric, getting rid of gas heaters, gas, et cetera. And it was just the, the people who registered complaints, who, who are speaking to this, this implementation, I, I guess AQMD has now changed it. Rather than making it mandatory that homeowners do it, they're now going to find the, the appliance providers. Basically, they'll incentivize them if they sell a certain percentage, they'll have to pay fines and fees, but as one council member pointed out, that's just, either way, that goes on the backs of the consumer. They're going to have to pay that fine whether it's done through, through them directly or through the suppliers of the appliances. So something to be aware that may be going on in our neighboring county that just, it would obviously affects the landscape. And anyway, and I have my opinions about the importance of natural, natural gas, but this is maybe not the time to talk about it. So that was Thursday morning. I also stopped at Oakmont, I mentioned that about Gloria Bowman, they had an open house. Also went to the Simi Valley Police Academy and learned about our amazing dispatch team and people there, just, we have some wonderful people there. Also learned that the one most difficult job, and maybe, Mike, you can confirm this or not, is if they work for the civil department where they have to serve people notices of eviction, et cetera. He was making the argument that he's pulled his gun more frequently having to do, serve people than, anyway, I just thought it was an interesting conversation. Anyway, April, Friday, April 4th, yes, I was a judge with two others for the Simi Valley Youth Council Talent Show, Friday and Saturday night. It's become such a big deal, they've moved it to two nights. Thank you, Ryan, you did a fabulous job, wonderful winners. I should mention that they raised $2,000, basically, they raised more, more money than that, but they gave away $1,000 each night in prizes to the winners. And so we, it was, it was very fun to be part of allocating those funds and sharing the wealth. So that was Friday and Saturday night. I also attended the Roundup Country Music Festival and worked with Councilmember Ayala. He said that he was making sure people were legal. Let's be honest, he was taking the money, I was carding the people. So I want to be sure our roles are accurate here. But, and I even chased some people down with drinks in hand who were not wearing their yellow band. I wanted to be sure that we're not getting our quanas in trouble. But anyway, I, I digress. On April 6th, Sunday, I do want to mention, I did have the opportunity of attending the American Association of University Women's Meeting where they had Carolyn Valdez as the speaker. And Carolyn is a historian for Simi Valley, and she spoke about Mexican heritage in Simi Valley. Phenomenal talk, wonderful talk. It also happened to be Pat Haven's 95th birthday. So Pat Haven's, she was not there. Pat Haven's is our, our city historian. I will say that when the time comes for the passing of the baton, I, we need to very much consider Carolyn Valdez. It was just incredible. I learned so much about our Mexican heritage in, within Simi Valley, and I, I won't tell you more, but really, it was outstanding, and you can learn more online, I can give you that. And maybe I should send that around to all of you, so you can follow up on that. And so I think, anyway, and she gave the 14 bus tours of, of the places that were significant in Simi Valley. So that was my week in a nutshell. Thank you for allowing me to weigh in as well, Mayor. I much appreciate it, and that ends my report.
I apologize for skipping you.
It's okay.
I won't do it again.
It's okay.
We'll skip Joseph next time. All right. Item 10B, are there any member requests for future, future agenda items?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have one request. Been working with the Sober Living Task Force and also with staff to understand the extent of the sober living homes in our city. I'd like a future agenda item to bring forward a package of nine bills that have been proposed on, on this topic. And then also, at the same time, I would like to include this topic in our legislative platform to give clear direction to staff. It wasn't explicitly spelled out in that.
Could I add to that request, that I would like to be aware of how many sober living homes we have within our community as well?
That's part of the discussion.
Is that part of it? Okay, just wanted to be sure that was...
So you'll second that?
Yes, I will second that.
All right, so that will be a future agenda item? Anybody else? No? All right, thank you, everybody, for being here. We are journeying in memory of a few people this evening. Our first one is Patty Maloney. She was an actress from Little House on the Prairie, who was just out here for their 50th anniversary. Also sadly for Marysville Police Officer Osmoa Rodarte and Kingside Police Sergeant Ryan Kennedy. So we're adjourned.